Good evening, everyone. Adequate notice of this meeting was provided by sending such notice to the Asbury Park Press, the Middletown Patch, and the Middletown Township Public School District website, and the posting of such notice at the Corvus T Minor Administrative Offices, and each elementary, middle, and secondary school in the district. Roll call.
Mrs. Caminiti?
Here.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Here.
Mrs. Minuies?
Here.
Mrs. Skelasky?
Here.
Mr. Soprowski?
Here.
Mr. Tulp?
Here.
Mrs. Ray?
Here.
Mrs. Tobacco?
Mr. Capone?
Here.
And now your motion for exec session to discuss tip and personnel matters. Call in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Absention. See you in a little bit.
Good evening, everyone. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in law.
Okay, we're gonna start this evening with our High School North student speaker, which is, I believe Jason Woods is not in today, right? Who is?
Oh, you're doing your answer.
Thank you, Ross.
Hi, my name is Rashi Hopziger. I'm the student from Middletown High School North, serving on board, but today I'm filling in for Jason Woods, who's our student liaison. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about what happened in October at North. We hosted a special freshman frontiers presentation on October ninth honoring Middletown's legacy and role in America 250. Tenth and eleventh grade students took the PSAT on October sixteenth. Next week, we will administer the NJGPA/NJSLA field test for Math and ELA. Prize referrals this month were submitted for Charlene Armetta, grade twelve, Alyssa Cherichella, grade twelve, Maddie DeFranco, grade twelve, Michael Domin, grade eleven, Josie Shawboy, grade ten, Colin Carroll, grade twelve, Isabel Churney, grade twelve, Olivia Sabarito, grade nine, Ava Panzino, grade twelve, Sofia Alvaro, grade ten, Bayou Louis, grade eleven, Riley Luma, grade eleven, Fiona Quinn, grade ten, Ava Reed, grade twelve, Benjamin Divine, grade nine, Audie Grimm, grade eleven, Bella Erzary, grade eleven. North's thirtieth annual Haunted Woods event on October eighteenth was a huge success. This tradition is always a favorite among our community. Earlier that afternoon, junior council hosted our second annual trunk or treat. Admission was free with the donation of a non-perishable food item for Middletown Helps its own. The MHSN choirs have been busy during the month of October with performances and fundraisers. The students participated in the annual fall plant sale fundraiser with the Latin Honor Society and sold mums, asters, cabbages, and pumpkins. Choir members also painted pumpkins for friends and family members. The MHSN choirs held open choir night at the October seventeenth Pinkout Home football game against Madawa. Middle school music students from all three middle schools were invited to the MHSN choir room for pizza rehearsal and to get some pink fling for the game. The MHSN choir members joined some South choir members to sing at Middletown Day on October nineteenth. Following vocal placements throughout September, a cappella began rehearsing for upcoming concerts and holiday events. The choirs also began selling MHSN music magnets and stickers to advertise the MHSN music program and encourage student participation in music and performing arts. Our Pinkout football game garnered a tremendous crowd. We honored our beloved teacher, Mrs. Mahoney, who recently battled breast cancer and is doing amazing. Congratulations to Jason Woods for being voted in as North Student Government President and Carly Cristiani SVP. Commendations to go to the pairs of Gary Alvaro and Thomas Greenwald and Austin Mayer and Kim McCarthy for running fantastic campaigns. Relay for Life has been selling pink breast cancer awareness pins this October, raising five dollars per pin. Our eighth grade open house will take place on November nineteenth from six to eight p.m. As well as the homecoming bonfire, which also features the recognition of all fall athletes in the stadium, is scheduled for Tuesday, November twenty-fifth from six to eight p.m. Rehearsals for the Diary of Anne Frank are highly anticipated. Fall play are ongoing. Performances will take place on November twenty-first and twenty-second. MHSN's Gay Street Alliance, GSA, celebrated National Coming Out Day with an invite-in celebration to build community and learn more about the mission. Students officially launched a line dancing club under the guidance of Miss Alfred to learn popular line dances, the country, pop, rock, and Latin songs. MHSN's National Honor Society hosted a food drive for the Red Bank Crop Walk, collecting food and other non-perishable items for the local families. Senior Rashi Hopziger took charge as the team leader for this amazing cause and personally collected thousands of pounds of food, as well as hundreds of dollars in online donations from local schoolists all over the town. Congratulations to our Super Smash Bros Ultimate Cruise Esports Team for defeating Barnegat High School two sets to zero. The team also defeated previously undefeated Ocean Township High School two sets to one. Congratulations to the cross-country team on their performances at the Shore Coaches Meet at Homedale Park. The team had five medal winners, placing in the top thirty in their races, which included about two hundred racers in each race. Helena Zep in fourth place and Isabel Courtney in twenty-third place took home varsity medals, while freshman medals came from Emily Trong in ninth place, Catherine Zee in eighteenth place, and Aiden Wall in twenty-fourth place. Helena Zep ran the second fastest time in school history at Homedale Park in nineteen minutes and twenty-three seconds. The girls' team had a great day with eleven girls racing and nine having personal best times at the Monmouth County Championships. Helena Zep led the way in proving her second all-time mark at Homedale Park, and Isabel Courtney now adding her name to the list at number eight. Ryan Feeley took home a top twenty medal in the boys' freshman race and Juliette Mullin in the girls' JV race. And congratulations to girls' cross-country team again on their seventh-place finish at the Shore Conference Championships. The team was led by senior Helena Zep, breaking the school record, running eighteen oh nine for the five K course and placing ninth overall. The team had almost every girl run personal bests. The top five finishers for the team were Helena, Isabel Courtney, Mia Zewisney, Emily Trong, and Morgan Bixby. A big congrats to the varsity girls' volleyball team for their win against Middletown South at our Spike Out Cancer Event at Brookdale. The girls won in two sets to defeat the Eagles. It was a spectacular show of support for Coach Owen. Middletown High School North's girls' volleyball team were division champs for the first time in school history. Carly Cristiani, Bella Erzary, and Mia Minson were selected to the Shore Conference C-North All-Division Team. Junior Bella Erzary won Division Player of the Year, and Coach Michelle DiAmore won Division Coach of the Year. Our football team has earned the number three seed in the state playoffs and will host crosstown rival Middletown South this Friday night at seven p.m. in the first round. The theme for the game is Orange Jow in support of leukemia awareness. Let's pack the stands, wear orange, and show our pride for North while we support an important cause. Thank you.
Thank you, Rashi. From High School South, Jessica Cirillo.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jessica Cirillo. I'm a senior at Middletown High School South, and tonight I'm gonna give you some updates on what's going on at our school. The PSAT took place on October seventeenth for our tenth and eleventh grader students. Activities were planned for our freshmen, and a big thank you goes out to our civic leaders and Mr. Lightbody for presenting engaging activities for our underclassmen during this time. Congratulations to our Lady Eagles cross-country team for winning the Monmouth County Championship, a well-deserved victory. The boys' soccer team achieved a historic milestone this past weekend. This season has brought two incredible accomplishments, the first being defeating CBA, the number one seed in the Shore Conference Tournament. They were able to defeat CBA, and they earned the spot in the championship game for the first time since two thousand and three. This was a major feat, as it marked the first time since two thousand and eighteen that CBA did not appear in the finals. Winning the Shore Conference Tournament Championship for the first time in school history after six rounds of the penalty kick shootout. Our Eagles defended the number-two seed Colts neck, senior goalkeeper Carson Perry saved the final shot, and senior Luke Strata sealed the victory with the game-winning kick, giving us a five-to-four win and penalties. In October, the Middletown High School South Spectrum, GSA, celebrated the LGBTQ+ History Month by hosting an informational table outside the media center to educate the community and welcome new members. The club hopes to continue fostering an inclusive and supportive school environment through initiatives like this. Congratulations to Olivia Yurkis, a College Board National Merit semifinalist who scored in the top one percent of the two thousand and twenty-six class. Olivia was also nominated for the Daughters of American Revolution Good Citizen Award and will compete in the DAR Good Citizen Scholarship Contest. The freshmen, sophomore, junior, and senior executive boards, along with student council, are working together to host a Battle of the Classes, which will start this November. We are looking forward to an exciting and spirited event. The Middletown High School South Environmental Club participated in a beach cleanup on Saturday, October eighteenth, in partnership with Clean Ocean Action at Ideal Beach. They will be hosting another cleanup at Leonardo Beach on November twenty-third. The Middletown High School South film students Hunter Denberg and Kiara Burns participated in a screenwriting workshop at Count Basie Center on Saturday, October twenty-fifth. The event includes a hands-on lab with professional screenwriters, a roundtable discussion, and networking with other film students and industry professionals. Middletown High School South will be celebrating its fiftieth anniversary on Saturday, October tenth, in two thousand and twenty-six. This event will feature food trucks, live music, school tours, and alumni art shows, and more. Save the date.
Thank you, Jessica. I'm now gonna turn to our district director of Student Support Services, Mrs. Dr. Young, for our Student Safety Data System, HIV Self-Assessment Scores for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. I'm Meg Young. I am the district director of Student Support Services. I will be presenting briefly tonight on our Student Safety Data System and our HIV Self-Assessment Scores. So the Student Safety Data System, or SSDS, are reports that we are required to give to the state and then report out and present to the Board of Education and the community twice a year. In the fall presentation, we report out on the entirety of the year before. So you see the far right column represents the numbers for each infraction category for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. To the far left, you see the incident types, and then that middle column is the twenty-three, twenty-four totals, just for a point of comparison. The second-to-last two rows, although they are reported out on, are not calculated in the column totals. In terms of the HIV Self-Assessment Scores, those are scores that are put together at the building level. There is a meeting to review a rubric with the school safety and climate team. These scores are decided upon once the rubric is scored. They're reported to Central Office by the principal and the anti-bullying specialist for the building, and then they are certified to the NJ DOE by the superintendent. There are core elements on the rubric that are graded. You can see some of them listed here. So each building's team goes through the rubric and assigns a score for each of these core elements. The scoring can be on a zero-to-three scale, with a score of three meaning the building exceeded the requirements on that core element. Should be noted that the highest maximum score that any building can receive is a seventy-eight. Here you can see the self-assessment scores for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year by building. These scores are now reported to the Department of Ed, and they will help inform the HIV grade that's issued by the Department of Ed in the spring. So in the spring presentation, I'll be back to report out on the SSDS numbers for the first half of this school year, and at that time, we'll also have the official HIV grades as issued by the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Young. Now bring up Mr. Cullen to speak about our spring twenty-five NJSLA results.
Thank you, Mr. Capone. Thanks, Rashi and Jessica, for sharing all those outstanding accomplishments that are to high schools, and thanks, Dr. Young, for your presentation. So tonight, I get to piggyback off of our conversation from last month where we talked about the three assessment pathways for graduation. Tonight, we're going to discuss our spring NJSLA and NJGPA results. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to give you a high-level overview. I want to be certain that I let you know that each building will have its own NJSLA presentation at an upcoming PTA, PTO, or PFA meeting. So tonight is going to be very generalized and high-level. We are going to, there are seven goals in this brief conversation tonight. Number one, we're going to highlight NJSLA performance levels for ELA, math, and science. Number two, we are going to report the percentage of our students who met or exceeded expectations on each assessment. Tonight, we're gonna dive into twenty different assessments. Number three, we're going to compare these percentages with state averages for levels four and five. Number four, we're going to note growth, consistency, or decline as it relates to our district's performance from two thousand and twenty-four. Number five, we're going to describe strategies for using NJSLA data to support continuous improvement across our district. Number six, we're going to discuss how we foster readiness for NJSLA on a regular basis. And number seven, we're going to identify where you can find assessment information for our district, as well as all curriculum-related information. And once again, there will be a more descriptive presentation in each of your buildings over the months ahead. So we're going to begin by looking at NJSLA's performance levels for ELA, math, and science. NJSLA uses five different performance levels for each of these assessments. Level one, the student did not yet meet expectations. Level two, the student partially met expectations. Level three, the student approached expectations. Level four, the student met expectations. And when we talk about NJGPA, which is our high school proficiency test, we'll use the terminology graduation-ready for level four, and also for level five, which is exceeded expectations. This presentation is going to feature the percentage of students that met levels four and five, achieved, met, or exceeded expectations. NJSLA uses four categories for science. These include level one, below proficient, level two, near proficient, level three, proficient, and level four, advanced proficient. So now we're going to look at each of the tests and how we perform. So we'll begin with the percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations for ELA in grades three through five. So for grade three ELA, the state average was forty-four point nine percent. Again, we're looking at the number of students that met level four and five. They either met or exceeded expectations. Our district performance was fifty-three point seven percent. We outperformed the state average by eight point eight percent. Our students who met or exceeded expectations increased five point seven percent from two thousand and twenty-four. We're always looking in the mirror. We always wanna know how we are progressing year over year, and so with each of these tests, we'll identify that. Grade four ELA, the state average was fifty-three point six percent. Our district performance was sixty-five point seven percent. We outperformed the state average by twelve point one percent. Our students who met or exceeded expectations increased four point seven percent from two thousand and twenty-four. Grade five ELA, the state average was fifty-two point seven percent. Our district performance was sixty-four point nine percent. We outperformed the state average by twelve point two percent. Our students who met or exceeded expectations remained consistent from two thousand and twenty-four on this assessment. Grade three math, the state average was forty-nine point eight percent. Our district performance was sixty-three percent. We outperformed the state average by thirteen point two percent. Our students who met or exceeded expectations increased five percent from two thousand and twenty-four. Grade four math, the state average was forty-six point seven percent. Our district performance was sixty-one point six percent. We outperformed the state average by fourteen point nine percent. While this reflects a one point four percent decline from two thousand and twenty-four, we still remain well above the state average. Two standards-aligned growth areas for this assessment include complex modeling and reasoning tasks and fractional operations. If there is ever a decline, even if it's a small decline, we do wanna make sure that we know exactly what that is so that we can support that with solid instruction. Grade five math, the state average was forty-four point two percent. Our district performance was fifty-eight point seven percent. We outperformed the state average by fourteen point five percent. We outperformed the state average by fourteen point five percent. Our students who met or exceeded expectations increased by three point seven percent from two thousand and twenty-four. Grade six ELA, the state average was fifty-six point one percent. Our district performance was sixty-eight point six percent. We outperformed the state average by twelve point five percent. Our students who met or exceeded expectations increased eight point six percent from two thousand and twenty-four. Grade seven ELA, the state average was fifty-seven percent. Our district performance was seventy-two point three percent. We outperformed the state average by fifteen point three percent. Our students who met or exceeded expectations increased nine point three percent from two thousand and twenty-four. Grade eight ELA, the state average was fifty-seven point one percent. Our district performance was seventy-three point three percent. We outperformed the state by sixteen point two percent. Our students who met or exceeded expectations increased seven point three percent from two thousand and twenty-four. Grade six math, the state average was thirty-nine point eight percent. Our district performance was fifty-one point six percent. We outperformed the state average by eleven point eight percent. Our students who met or exceeded expectations increased eight point six percent from two thousand and twenty-four. Grade seven math, the state average was thirty-eight point eight percent. Our district performance was fifty-one point three percent. We outperformed the state average by twelve point five percent. While this reflects a one point seven percent decline from twenty-four, we remain well above the state average. Two particular standards-aligned growth areas for this assessment include geometric problem-solving and complex reasoning. Grade eight math, for those students enrolled in pre-algebra, not Algebra I honors, the state average was twenty point seven percent. Our district performance was thirty-four point nine percent. We outperformed the state average by fourteen point two percent. Our students who met or exceeded expectations remained consistent from two thousand and twenty-four on this assessment. Grade nine ELA, the state average was forty-nine point nine percent. Our district performance was sixty-four percent. We outperformed the state average by fourteen point one percent. Our students who met or exceeded expectations remained consistent from twenty-four on this particular assessment. Grade eleven NJGPA, we'll use the terminology graduation-ready because this is the graduation proficiency assessment. The state average was eighty point seven. District performance was ninety point eight. We outperformed the state by ten point one percent, and our students who are graduation-ready did increase by ten point one percent from last year. Algebra I, the state average was thirty-seven point nine percent. Our district performance, fifty-seven point nine percent. We outperformed the state by twenty percent. Our students who met or exceeded expectations remained consistent from two thousand and twenty-four, and has been the case in the past. Our middle school eighth-grade Algebra I honors students continue to truly excel on this assessment. Each of our three middle schools, Bayshore, Thorne, and Thompson, they had ninety-seven to ninety-nine percent proficiency rates for our students. In geometry, the state average was fifty-six percent. Our district performance, seventy-eight point four percent. We outperformed the state average by twenty-two point four percent. Our students who met or exceeded expectations increased nine point four percent from two thousand and twenty-four. And NJGPA for math, the state average was fifty-eight percent. Our district performance, seventy percent. We outperformed the state average by twelve percent, and our students who are graduation-ready increased twelve percent from two thousand and twenty-four. And our final three tests are in science, in grade five science. And again, it's important to note that this is three years' worth of standards that our students are being tested on. They're being tested in fifth, they're being tested in eighth, and they're being tested in eleventh. State average, thirty-one point one percent, thirty point one percent, I apologize. District performance, thirty-seven point six percent. We outperformed the state average by seven point five percent. Our students achieving proficiency or advanced proficiency increased four point six percent from two thousand and twenty-four. Grade eight science, the state average was nineteen percent. Our district performance, twenty-seven point eight percent. We outperformed the state average by eight point eight percent. This does reflect a one point two percent decline from last year, yet we still remain well above the state average. One standards-aligned growth area for this assessment was applying scientific concepts to complex multi-step scenarios. And our last test, grade eleven science, the state average was thirty-one point three percent. Our district performance, thirty-one point nine percent. We performed very slightly above the state average on this assessment. Our students who met or exceeded expectations remained consistent from two thousand and twenty-four. So what do we do with NJSLA data? I mean, data is simply a part of good teaching. It's really, it's what we use in order to inform our daily practice. So it is a valuable mirror to evaluate our own instructional effectiveness. Results are used to inform targeted instruction that is responsive and differentiated to all of our students' diverse needs. That includes remediation, reteaching, enrichment. We use NJSLA data to design and facilitate meaningful and purposeful professional development that helps our teachers become ready to deliver that high-level instruction that we're so accustomed to here in Middletown. We use it to guide curriculum audits and, of course, examine the educational programs that we're using. We use NJSLA data to identify achievement gaps and inform improvement practices. Moreover, we use it to monitor individualized and collective growth on a very regular basis. So how do we get our students ready for NJSLA? It's just embedded in what we do on a very regular basis in our classrooms. So we can begin by talking about the I-Reddy Benchmark Assessments that we administer in the fall, in the winter, and the spring, and these are great for informing us how our students are progressing and learning at three points throughout the year. It does enable us to identify their strengths. It enables us to identify their growth areas, and of course, we want to always continue to strengthen their strengths and build up their growth areas. We do utilize MTSS, which is a multi-tiered system of support, which varies in intensity based upon what it is that our students need. We typically provide spiral review, which means that we are reviewing material that we had done in the past on a more regular basis, because if we don't revisit it, we will easily forget it. I would recommend anyone to please look at the curriculum guides that we have on our district website. You can see that they are comprehensive. You can see that they are standards-aligned, and you can see the different types of assessments that we use throughout the year to monitor our students' growth. We always facilitate small group instruction, which is really designed to make sure that we're addressing all students' needs within the class. And again, that involves enrichment, and it also involves remediation and reteaching. We encourage our teachers to always offer actionable feedback, so that our students can respond to how they're performing. And perhaps most importantly, we're always cultivating an inspiring and a caring environment where our students can grow and be comfortable and confident. To that end, we always want to thank our teachers, our administrators, and of course, our families. It is a collective effort, you know, that supports our success here on a very regular basis, and these scores do demonstrate success. So based on tonight's presentation, we analyzed, on a high level, twenty assessments, and of those twenty assessments, we saw growth in fourteen. And the truth is, the principal is always competing against yourself, self-improvement being better today than you were yesterday, and that's evident. In three cases, we remained consistent, and in three cases, there was a slight decline. And of course, we want to use those opportunities to strengthen our own strengths here. So again, I do recommend that you visit our Curriculum Instruction website. You can have a look at all the assessments that we administer throughout the year, and of course, any of our curriculum guides are available for you there as well. We are also in the process of developing a comprehensive data locker in the Genesis Parent Portal, so parents can see their students' NJSLA scores year over year. So parents can see their students' DIBL scores. So parents can see their students' COGET scores. We want it all in one place, a one-stop shop for you to see it, and you're very familiar with the Genesis portal, so we do recommend that you go in there and see that data locker that is continuing to be built as we speak. And of course, we look forward to continuing the growth and the success from two thousand and twenty-five as we prepare for two thousand and twenty-six. So thank you for the opportunity to present. Have a great night.
Thank you, Mr. Cullen. Okay, moving on to our committee reports, we're going to start with Mr. Tull, the Curriculum and Instruction.
Thank you, Mr. Capone. Yes, the curriculum committee met on October twenty-seventh. Mr. Cullen gave us a lot of updates, including much of what you saw in the presentation just now. Just a few other highlights that I'll hit. I know our student speakers mentioned the PSATs recently, but just a nice shout-out that we had a total of twelve students in the district who achieved National Merit Scholar status based on their PSATs tour. So that was great to hear, and congratulations to those students. Another nice piece of news we got was that Harmony Elementary had converted what was their old library room into a music room. So they, you know, it's now a dedicated area for band, for chorus, for musical instrument storage, and anything in the music world. All those books are repurposed into the various classroom libraries, so it's not like they don't have library resources anymore, but they now have a dedicated room, which, and I understand that's a school with a large number of elementary participants in band and chorus, so that was really cool news. What else? The, there's been an ongoing committee that Mr. Cullen heads up, the Homework Committee. So it's comprised of a number of staff, administrators, and folks to have an ongoing dialogue to try to build a consistent district-wide approach to how each of our buildings and classrooms attack homework in a more consistent way, purposeful way, with some uniform expectations going forward. That's an ongoing discussion, but hopefully fairly soon, there's going to be some, you know, work product, or I don't want to call it a policy, but kind of an expectation on paper, district-wide, building and classroom-wide across the district for some consistency with those expectations. And then also, we're continuing the work on the developing the K-25 math programs that are being piloted. As we've mentioned, the last several months, there's a couple of different programs being piloted. The math specialists and interventionists, the update we got was that they're immersed in it. They're nowhere near at a point where they want to tell us which one they like better or best, but I personally was encouraged to hear that there is a recognition early on that these platforms can be very tech-heavy, and our specialists are recognizing that that isn't necessarily a good thing. And so while they might have nice digital tools and online tools, I'm glad to hear that they're recognizing that that doesn't necessarily translate to the growth in math that we want to see on next year's presentation of those scores and other data that we get. So glad to hear that's ongoing, that that was a recognition. So that's the curriculum highlights.
Thank you, Ms. Tull. Moving on to Student Services, Ms. Wright.
Yes, we also met last night. We had a little bit of a shorter agenda this month, but one thing that I will share, and it's on tonight's agenda for approval by the board, is after an extensive interview process, we do have a candidate to fill an open special education supervisor position. This is not a new position. The candidate who is on the agenda tonight is someone who I'm very excited, actually, to be starting here, because this person actually has ICR and LLD teacher experience in the past, along with being in administrative role for several years. So we're excited to hopefully welcome this candidate to our district soon. We also talked, obviously, about the NJSLA performance results that we just had a presentation about. We got a brief update on the Lane Croft Annex, which furniture has now been purchased. It looks like construction on the annex is almost complete, and we are hoping that we are going to have an official opening date to share with the community very soon. But from what I heard from the Facilities Committee, this is very exciting and looks completely different, and I think all of us are very excited about welcoming the students to that new site very soon. And the last thing that we discussed, and this is something that I'm extremely happy to see, is that we finally had no litigation matters for special ed to discuss last night, and I think that is a great progress for the district.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Moving on to Facility, Ms. Thority.
The Facilities Committee met on October fifteenth. The highlights of what was discussed in our committee, we also did talk about the annex, and this is Wright to just build everybody in on. We also talked about the High School South turf field and the work that we have scheduled for January to do some repairs to the base of that field, to smooth out some areas that are, that need to be smoothed out along the sidelines. We also talked about an operations update. Mr. Nasser shared that we've been able to upgrade the air filters used in our HVAC units to a higher MERV rating for minimal additional costs, and we are actually seeing the benefit of this in improved air quality testing results around the district, which was a positive. We're also in the process of getting a new program going for facilities use called Operations Hero. We use this program already for work orders, but we are also looking to get the module online for facilities use. This platform will make it possible for facilities use to request permits online and get more information about our facilities that we have available to permit. The plan is to roll this out for our elementary schools first and add the middle and high schools later. We'll streamline the arrangements that need to be made internally as well, custodial, security, equipment, et cetera. So look forward to getting that up and running. We have a couple of items on the agenda this evening for approval, our annual comprehensive maintenance plan and Form M-1. These are documents that must be submitted annually to the NJ DOE County Office. The M-1 reflects our projected maintenance expenses for the district, and our comprehensive maintenance plan includes projected costs for maintenance, and details, the activities are included in those budgeted costs. We also talked about a meeting that the district administration, actually, Mr. Nasser and I, and we met with a company called DCO Energy. We're looking at some different ways to potentially save some more money on our energy costs. They're an energy savings consultant. We talked about the concept of a program that is called Community Solar. It's a New Jersey clean energy program that was recently opened up, so we're exploring to see whether this program could potentially bring some revenue into the district by installing some solar canopies in some of our parking lots. We did review a preliminary analysis with them, and we will be sharing that with the Facilities Committee in an upcoming meeting. We also talked about the Bayview Fields. We've been talking about those for a while. We will be having a meeting with the township, actually, tomorrow to discuss the phasing of the planned improvements to the field. They're going to, they're getting close to putting that project out to bid, so they are planning on installing irrigation and other improvements, so we're going to be meeting with them tomorrow. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Ms. Thority. Moving on, co-curricula, Mr. Fitzgerald.
I might defer to Mr. West.
I'll take care of that, Mr. Capone. Good evening, everyone. Our most recent co-curricular meeting took place on October sixteenth. During that meeting, a thorough discussion related to the operation of co-curricular activities in the district took place. Among the topics addressed included, but were not limited to, the review of clubs and club advisors for the two thousand and twenty-five school year, stipend amounts, the role that the MTEA contract plays with co-curriculars, the club meeting and attendance monitoring process, and how new clubs get started. The district's announcement recognition calendar was reviewed. The list of club events or recognition days and weeks was created by Building Administration, Central Office, and feedback from club advisors. These recognitions and the related procedures were implemented in order to ensure consistency and equity related to school celebrations. Related to Champions Morning and Aftercare, the Champions Morning and Aftercare waiting lists in each elementary school were reviewed. The waiting lists that exist are a result of recent registrations and need to hire additional employees in order to meet state-required student-to-adult ratios. Students on a current waiting list are expected to be cleared within the next two weeks. For liability and insurance reasons, when students who participate in Champions Aftercare Program are using the school's playground equipment, other students and community members are not permitted to utilize that area of the property at that time. Champions typically uses the equipment at three forty-five daily. Other people on the school grounds at that point can use the fields or any other area of the fields, aside from the actual playground itself. We also addressed athletics. The district will be utilizing a weather safety platform named Parry Weather. They will be monitoring real-time weather conditions, will receive instant alerts, and access- and access both historical data and future forecasts in order to ensure the safety of our school community during school-based events. A discussion related to the dedication of athletic playing fields and courts took place. It was decided that this practice should not be adopted moving forward. And finally, shore conference updates for the fall season were provided. And that's it, Mr. Capone.
Thank you, Ms. Gerpatrick.
I think you forgot to mention that Mr. Ranelle is in charge of the Perry Weather.
He didn't have anything to add, Ms. Minuies.
Thank you, it's a blast to meet you.
Yeah, this is already number six on your committee meeting notes. I'm sorry, did you skip over that or did you speak about that?
Sure, we did talk about a proposal that we had received from Evicate. They currently do food service consulting for us, but they also do facilities analysis. And we are looking at having them come in to evaluate our facilities department. We had a very comprehensive, in-depth report probably about six years ago or so, I think around 2019. So we're looking to update that. You know, it's a good practice to do every so often to take a look at our staffing levels and looking at, you know, anything that we could, you know, compare to private sector. And how we, you know, how our department performs or how it's operating compared to that. So we're looking to have them come in just to take us a look and give us some feedback.
Is Centric the only company that we're looking at?
They do a lot of school facilities work here in New Jersey. So, and we, again, we worked with them already. They have our prior more comprehensive report to work off of, so it makes sense to have them updated.
How did that, how did that come about, like them doing this, this work for us?
Looking for cost savings in how we operate our facilities management and, you know, how we utilize our personnel in the most effective manner to ensure that our buildings and grounds are maintained and our, you know, those things are in order given the staff that we have.
So when we're talking about this company, you mentioned food service. Are they only looking at outsourcing facilities? Now, people are also looking at...
They're, I mean, they're just looking at how we operate and comparing it to, you know, other districts of our size, private sector metrics. I mean, the idea is just to see if there's any improvements we can make operationally for cost savings, like Dr. Alton said.
Right, it's not, it's not necessarily with the goal of outsourcing anything. It's more for efficiency saving. Do we have the adequate level of staffing that we need? Are we deploying people in an efficient manner to get work done? Is our workflow appropriate so that we can get things accomplished in a timely manner?
We've done this with other areas. And we had somebody come in and look at our transportation department a number of years ago. Like I said, we've done facilities before. We've had people come in and look at our special ed department as well. It's, you know, it's good practice sometimes to have a consultant who deals with a lot of different entities take a look and give us some ideas.
And it does say potential savings from outsourcing. So we want to go how did the district to get some potential...
I mean, that's one of the things that they, they could look at.
Are we going to have a conversation about that before that question?
Well, this is only a report. So in order, in order for anything to take place, you would have to put out an RFP for a company to give you a price to outsource anything. This is just feedback at this point. And part of that feedback could be a recommendation for outsourcing, a part of it, all of it, none of it. That is where the, once we have that information, that's when the conversation with the board will start in the sense of, here's the data that they've given us, what are our next steps? Is it a reconfiguration of what we already have? Is it, you know, is it looking at an outsourcing potential for certain areas?
Yeah, my, my personal opinion of this being done years back is it didn't work for us.
Yeah.
It really didn't. It was a mess.
Can I ask what's the cost for this, just to have this report done first? I don't have the amount of the proposed economy, but it was less than, I mean, I'd have to get back to the exact amount. It's between $6,000 and $7,000.
It was under $10,000.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Yeah, I just have to go back to that again. Outsourcing is one thing, but we have, you know, great people working in our schools with our kids. And, you know, I saw it happen the last time that happened, and I definitely wouldn't want to see that happen again.
Well, again, this is just a, this is just a review of our operations. We don't know what the recommendations are going to be at this point. It's just doing our due diligence, knowing, you know, that we are always looking at everything we can to try to do things more efficiently.
I was under the assumption that it was more for efficiency reasons. It wasn't to completely outsource.
Yeah, and...
And we don't, again, we don't know what the recommendations are going to be. That's, we're just bringing somebody in to take a look. They could, you know, be just looking at our staffing levels. They could be looking at our organizational. They could be looking at, you know, how, how things are divided up. I mean, it's, it's a comprehensive look at everything. It's not geared toward a certain thing.
I just had questions because I never heard, I've never heard this discussed before. So it was something new that you just said.
Yes.
Okay, anything else? Okay.
Well, we have technology.
Technology, Mr. Gerpatrick?
No. So the Technology Committee meeting took place on October 16th. We talked about some initiatives going on in the area of technology. Actually, one of them is a live in front of you. We talked about the concerns about the audio and video with the board meetings. And our Director of IT did do some research. And, you know, a couple of things we're doing right now to address that is, one, effective with this meeting. What was happening is our feed was being funneled through Zoom before it actually went to YouTube, and that was really a life over from the pandemic. So we are removing that routing and just going directly to YouTube. So hopefully we'll see what the feedback is tonight. That would give some improvement to the pixelation and what we've seen in the video that isn't making it clear. We also are ordering more microphones because we have increased the amount of people that are around the table with our student representatives and so forth. So we're going to get a few more microphones. And related to that, we'll have to get a new soundboard to accommodate a few more microphones. But we're also looking at some other things. I know Mr. Soprowski referred this to a firm he saw down at the School Boards Workshop. And, you know, we'll meet with them and see if there's anything they can do. I think they were maybe focused more on the video portion of it. I know they can also do sound, but we're going to meet with them and see if they have any ideas for us also. So we're working on improving that for everybody. We also talked about Custodia, which is a no-cost application that allows parents greater visibility and control of their child's school-issued device at home. We, this is tied into our program that we have here in the district as well. It also includes access to the MTPS Online Safety Hub, which includes tools for parents to help navigate online resources. If the email hasn't gone out already, I'm not sure if it has. It will be going out shortly with registration information to all parents. We also talked about our cybersecurity training that we're doing in district. We are doing short cybersecurity training videos that are now included in our annual mandated training. We are also doing ongoing smart phishing campaigns with our staff, sending out emails with certain scenarios, seeing if they'll actually click on it or not. If they are clicking on it, you know, we will go back to them and advise them that that, you know, that was something that they shouldn't have done. So we are looking to enhance everybody's awareness of cybersecurity threats. We also have now an MTPS Technology Services Status page called Status Gator. It's a real-time cloud monitoring service that aggregates the status of all our third-party applications we have here in the district into a single page. It's publicly facing, and it provides all students and staff real-time updates of our applications, outages, and maintenance. So if something isn't working quite right on your machine, you can go and take a look and see if there's an actual outage with that application. And that was our technology meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Story. I'm now going to open the microphone up for public comment on gender.
Mr. Capone, could I have a minute before we do that?
Go ahead.
We sat here last month and we listened to our attorney tell us about public comment. And I totally disagree with the interpretation that we have. So I would like to make a motion to change the name from public comment to public session and put in all questions that can be answered will be answered. That including budget questions and school operations because we are committed to transparency and working with our community. I would like to do that.
I don't have a motion there, but I don't know if it has to be a policy written, because we have a policy.
I would like to make the motion to do that and do it effective ASAP.
Is there a second?
Second.
I just have one question. Because public comment says 30 minutes. Is there going to be a timeframe or is it going to be...
You can, you can keep the 30 minutes. I'm looking to add the extra words to the public comment because the board has the right to extend that 30 minutes if we choose to. So that wouldn't be affected. The words that I want to add makes us give the answers to the questions that we know because there is so much misinformation out in this community that parents are asking us and we're sitting here not answering. We need to be upfront and honest and get the truth out and stop the nonsense going around the township.
Mrs. Minuies, can you just repeat for me if you wanted to change, rename public comment to public what?
Change the name to public session.
Public session.
Because public comment seems to mean that we can't talk back, but that's not what it means. But public session.
Okay, and who seconded that? Was that you, Mr. Fitzgerald?
I did. All in favor?
Well, I just want to clarify, it's not just changing the name. I believe that Ms. Minuies is also saying that we should be answering questions that can be answered in real time.
Yes, here, right here at the board meeting.
So that, I'm sorry, is that just up to Frank?
No, that's up to administration at that point.
Yeah, but why, why?
Now, all quick, at the board session, all comments go through the chair. So the chair would be the one answering the comments.
Well, but if the chair can't answer it, then someone else that can should be answering it.
Well, I don't know if that could be done.
Why can't that be done? Everybody's sitting at this table.
Do you have all the answers, Joe?
What?
Do you have all the answers? You can answer every question.
No, I don't have the answer.
That's what I'm saying.
I think, I think what we're saying is whoever, whoever can answer the question just answers it. If it's a quick answer, right?
I think we're going for too much of this and we'll just move on to a public comment.
People want to know about budget issues. Our administration, we pass the budget. Those questions is public knowledge. They should be able to be answered.
It's also in public documents, yes.
Yeah, but they should still be able to be answered.
I'm just, it's also in public documents. You're correct.
Well, so, yeah, so there's no reason why we can't, we sit here and say, I can't answer that, or we say nothing. We should be saying, yes, you're right, this is, this is it, or explaining what the real question is.
Even if we don't have an answer, just say we'll get the answer and get back to whoever wants it.
That's usually what we do.
But Joe, that's not giving the public the answers to their questions.
We're going to, we're going to end this discussion. We want to public comment. Would anybody like to make a public comment?
No.
There was a motion. There was a motion. I had a second.
I think Amy Taylor will.
Mrs. Hamley.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
It's changing the name and putting the word in.
I just want to make sure. It's not just changing the name. There's an actual back, hold on one second, please. There's actual a back and forth. It's not just the comment.
Right, we're putting in that all questions that can be answered will be answered. That includes budget questions, school operations. And I want to put in that we're committed to transparency and working with the community because that's the importance of answering these questions and getting the true information out there and stop making our school district look so bad. Because if they don't answer, we have a great school district. We have great things going on. We need to stop the nonsense and put the truth out on the table. And we all know, Amy, you do the budget, you should have the answers. Just if we're changing a program, you have the answers. So there's no reason why we have to sit here and look down and not say anything. It's embarrassing. We've always seen the answers before, and lately we're not getting any answers. So that's why I feel that we need to change this and put it, put it in writing on our, our public session. When you're saying they have 30 minutes, they have this and these words. Answer the questions.
There is a policy that's currently in the district that controls public comment. The attorney's comments at this meeting were consistent with that policy.
No, they weren't. But he says, he says people couldn't speak twice and they can. He said that we can't comment and we can. And he said it's up to the board to be able to comment.
I, I understand, but if there's a policy on point, then the way that the policy needs to be amended is to amend the policy which requires a first and second reading.
We never even have a policy meeting.
Like I said before, we need a policy to put this in place.
Well, I still think I'm the one here, you know, it's our motion to answer the question.
Will the chair of policy bring us back to the policy?
I'm happy to bring it to the board.
Thank you very much. Now, we'll be on to the public comment. Would anybody wish to make a public comment? You have three minutes.
I have a public comment on public comment. Your policy, it's Kristen Rooney. I'm from Middletown.
Thank you.
This is your policy because I think we're confused. Your policy on public comment, which is not consistent with what the lawyer said at the last meeting. Please remember, this is a public meeting. Anything you say will be a public record. As a result, pursuant to law, the Board of Education cannot respond to you publicly concerning certain matters such as those regarding an individual student. If there is a matter that you wish to remain private concerning personnel or students, please contact the superintendent's office. Public comment periods shall also be governed by the following rules. Number one, a participant must be recognized by the board president or presiding officer and must preface comments by an announcement of his or her name, address, or municipality of residence, a group affiliation if applicable. Number two, each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes of duration. Number three, no participant shall speak more than once on the same topic until all others who wish to speak on that topic have been heard. Number four, all statements, questions, or inquiries shall be directed to the board president, and any questions or inquiries directed by a participant to another board member shall be redirected to determine if such a statement, question, or inquiry shall be addressed on behalf of the board or by the individual board member. And number five, questions requiring investigation shall be referred by the board to the superintendent's office for consideration and later response. A participant may be asked to submit each question in written format. So your policy is already to give answers. Regardless of what you want a lawyer to read, regardless of what you want to say on social media, your policy is to give an answer where you have an answer. We are all reasonable adults. We understand that if you can't give us an answer, that you'll go away and find one. But we appreciate if you give an answer where it is available. And I appreciate Mrs. Minuies continuing to try to demand the transparency that's already in your policies. So stop wasting our time.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to make a public comment? Does your name address the record, please?
My name is Ashley Studd. I live in Middletown, New Jersey. Bill's List, item 11D. We once again paid $167,000 for Class III officers. That's over $1 million since April, when the mayor committed to helping us pay for the Class III officers. Shared Services Committee normally meets every other month per previous meeting. They have not been on the agenda of meeting since probably before January, despite the fact that we know they met in May or April to discuss Plan B that was kind of introduced at a meeting. So my question is, is Shared Services planned to meet? Since I know that they are not listed in the agenda, so I know that means that they have not met.
Amy.
Why is this, I'm directing you to the board president.
I don't set the meeting. I'm sorry.
Has anyone reached out to you?
Nobody's reached out to me and I don't set the meeting.
You're allowed to ask them for a meeting also? Oh, okay, that was good. The other thing I'm wondering about in the Bill's List is we paid $27,000 to HSI, who is our audit company. We learned this week that they are also the treasurer of a PAC that contributed to a current Board of Ed candidate slate. that contributed to a current Board of Ed candidate slate. What? That doesn't feel like independent audit to me. I don't know. Seems like a conflict of interest. So, I really recommend that maybe we thank our audit company, given the financial issues we're in. A little bit of transparency would go a long way. Anybody want to comment on that? Cool, okay, thanks, guys.
Hello, I attended some of the strategic planning sessions.
Name and address of the record, I'm sorry.
My name is Jacqueline Edder. I live in Middletown, New Jersey. I attended some of the strategic planning sessions over the summer where it was noted that the study on the school size and the capacity would be completed by the end of October. It's October twenty-eighth. How's that study been completed and will it be shared publicly with the community?
We don't have a date yet and we're still waiting. We spoke to Ross Haber at the end of last week and he is projecting potentially another two weeks he needs to finalize that. The administration and the board will get that and then Mr. Haber will be presenting to the school community.
That seems like crucial information in making any decisions related to redistricting or school closures. Have you discussed a minimum timeline that you would put in place between getting that information, making those decisions, communicating it, communicating it with the community, and the action of school closures or redistricting?
Do you have any plans to?
You probably should.
We're waiting for the results of the study first.
And then, second, on a secondary note to what was already brought up in terms of the accounting firm that's doing all of the financial reporting for this Board of Ed, it should cause a lot of alarm bells for the current Board of Ed that's sitting. It should also cause alarm bells for the Institute, the American Institute of the Certified Public Accountants as it violates the Code of Professional Conduct. And anyone who's listening can file a complaint directly against that specific accounting firm with that institution about that professional violation of code of conduct.
Can you repeat the name of that again?
The American Institute of Certified Public Accountants. They hold the licenses for people who are certified public accountants. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to make a public comment? Our agenda items only.
Dan Lazon, Middletown. Amy, you mentioned about the comprehensive maintenance plan, the M1 form. I don't see that on the agenda. Do you have a copy of it available? Has it been published?
We are, I don't know if it was listed as an attachment on the website. If not.
Because it says it's on a file attachment, but I don't see it attached. So, you're voting on it tonight, but we don't have visibility into it. Does the rest of the board have visibility as well?
The board, the board has it. It might not be a public attachment. You know, we can certainly make that available to anyone who asks.
Cool, that would be great. Yeah, if you can post that, that would be great. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to make a public comment? Our agenda items only.
I have one that's unrelated to my last comment, unless anybody else does. So, you mentioned that there were two consulting firms. DCO Energy? Amy, is that, did I hear that right? DCO Energy?
DCO Energy.
DCO. And was it Evocate for the, what was the second one?
Evocate.
Evocate?
Edvocate.
Edvocate?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is it E-D-V-O-C-A?
No, E-D-V-O-C-A.
E-V-V-O-C-A-T-E?
E-V-V-O-C-A-T-E.
Okay, and I have to clarify after. So, just a question on how did you choose those consulting firms? And how much did it cost for the DCO Energy consultant? And when do you decide to go out to bid versus not on these types of things?
We merely met with the consultant just as an information sharing. We have not engaged them or paid them anything. It was really just to get some information on the concept of the community solar. So, that's not something that, they're not a firm that we've engaged.
Okay, so, when you're going to engage somebody and have to pay them, when do you have to go out to bid for something like this energy consultant? They're not charging you, I'm guessing?
We would have, we would have to see what the scope of work would be, how much it would cost. I mean, we're not, we're not at that point yet.
I guess, but my question is, if you're going to pay a consultant to do a service, do you have to go out to bid to get that consultant? How are you choosing?
It depends upon, it depends upon the level of work. If it's a small amount of work and the cost is not a large cost and we don't have to go out to bid or we can, we can just get proposals or if it's over the bid threshold, we go out to bid, which is now fifty-four thousand. But for professional services, you don't have to bid. The board can do a request for proposal and make a selection, you know, based on evaluating those. It depends upon the type of service. I mean, it's not, it's not like a one-size-fits-all answer. The law is different for different types of procurement.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else wish to make a public comment? Our agenda items only.
Hi, Rubika Lara, Middletown, New Jersey. My question is about the NJSLA scores. Is there a way to see that on a bell curve so that we can see more practically how we relate to the other schools?
We have a series of graphics. We can pull some online.
Yeah, I would love that. Okay, thank you. And then, for, I want to just quickly talk about the public comment, comments. I have not really attended many Board of Ed meetings. I'm relatively new to this. And I have to say it's been very disappointing. I left feeling very sad. This is what's happening, especially after the last meeting. I think that we need to take a step back and realize that parents being involved in the schools is the number-one key success for a school district. We all want to be involved. That's all we want. We just want to make sure that our children are set up for success. I have four. So, you're just now seeing the beginning of me. Like, I'm here for a while. So, I'm just imploring you to please take a moment, understand that mistakes have been made and it's fine. We're all human. We all make mistakes. But if we can stop and adjust right now and set a new course where we're transparent, where we answer questions, where, you know, it's, we're not, it's not cutthroat, it's collaborative, I think that's all we really want. At least, I think that's what I want.
Thank you.
Scott McPherson from Middletown. Going back to the Edvocate, it's E-D-V-O-C-A-T-E?
Yes.
Okay. So, how many administrators do we have in the district? Why can't this be done by administration as opposed to outsourcing it? It seems like we love to outsource things in this district that cost money and we're in a situation where we're trying to save money. So, it seems like maybe this task could be given to an administrator who then could make a recommendation to administration and/or the board, that way eliminating the need for Edvocate to come in and make a recommendation. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to make a public comment?
Eric Dowell, Middletown, New Jersey. Just to follow up on the audit firm, because a little extra detail might be helpful to the board. The advisory director at HFA is the treasurer of the PAC in question. That PAC in question started accepting contributions shortly after it appears Plan A was finalized with insurance, shared services. Something leaked out of shared services. All the contributors to that PAC are in the business that you would expect for construction, consultants, lawyers, businesses that would profit from redevelopment, reconstruction of schools. And now, that PAC, that treasurer of the PAC being the advisory director at HFA, where we're about to pay them twenty-seven thousand dollars for supposedly independent audit services, is donating to candidates in this BOE ranks. To say that calls the entire audit firm into question is an understatement. To say that we should pay any of their remaining bills, the answer is a clear no. And to question whether they should be our auditor for one more day, the answer is pretty clear. This is an overt conflict of interest the entire township should be aware of.
Anybody else wish to make a public comment? We have one more left. Okay, we're going to move on now to proclamations. We have National Custodial Workers' Recognition Day. Whereas be resolved, the Middletown Township Board of Education hereby proclaim October 2nd as National Custodial Workers' Day in Middletown Township Public Schools. Another proclamation, National Principals Month. Be it resolved that Middletown Township Board of Education hereby recognize October as National Principals Month and urge all Middletown students, parents, and teachers, and school district leaders to join them, expressing appreciation for their outstanding work of the elementary, middle, and high school principals throughout the district. I now have a report from Dr. Alpholm coming up.
Thank you. Highlights for the last month today and yesterday, we had our first superintendent council meetings. They were held this, this week and they were extremely successful. We had parents, student, teachers, administrators, and Board of Education members involved in the discussion. At the elementary meeting, the following topics were discussed. We discussed HVAC systems in the district, securing substitute teachers regularly, parent-teacher conference structure at the elementary level, the iReady platform, our current homework policy, and billing, buildings and grounds concerns. At our secondary meeting, which was held today, the following topics were discussed. The budget process and prioritization within the budget, potential future infrastructure upgrades, district rezoning, and where we are in the process of the study, eighth-grade opportunities to visit the high school and become acclimated to the new environment, possible joint student council and/or peer mentoring opportunities with high school and middle school students, and the high school and middle school schedule structure. Talking points for each of these council meetings will be posted on the district website for the public to access in the next couple of days. Congratulations to our high school South Boy soccer team on earning a hard-fought Shore Conference championship this past weekend. As our student speaker mentioned, the game went through regulation, two overtimes, and penalty kicks. And anyone who has watched competitive soccer knows that that's a pretty nail-biting experience. Having been a player in the Shore Conference myself, not soccer, but, and a coach in an SET final, and a soccer mom, I know how monumental this victory is, especially given that it is the first one in South school history. The Shore Conference is by far one of the most competitive conferences in the state. And most importantly, this is a memory that our student athletes, our families, and our coaches will cherish forever. So, congratulations to those athletes and all of the fall athletes who have had varying degrees of success on the athletic competition field this fall. I want to just provide the community a reminder about the NJSLA and NJGPA field testing that's coming up next week on November 3rd and 5th. These field tests will help prepare for the formal new adaptive test administration that will take place in the spring. Also, a reminder on the calendar that students are not in session on Tuesday due to Election Day. Our buildings are polling places. Our staff will be in and be having some professional development on this day. The district is also closed next Thursday and Friday for teachers convention. Several of our elementary schools participate in a great program with the American Heart Association called Jump for Heart Challenge. And I'm proud to announce that out of the nine-hundred-and-fifty-four schools in the state of New Jersey that participate, River Plaza placed twenty-fourth in the state and fourth in Monmouth County. And school principal Amanda Mergner was also recognized by the American Heart Association as the Heart of Gold Principal for Monmouth County for her leadership efforts in creating a program that engaged students and families to prioritize their heart and brain health. And also proud to announce that Nut Swamp Elementary School, under the leadership of Mrs. Carrie Albanese, were fifth in Monmouth County and achieved their best year in the history of the program. So, congratulations to those school communities for their philanthropic efforts. Another really important recognition that we found out about today is that several of our schools were named U.S. News and World Report Best in Elementary and Middle Schools. These schools were in the top forty percent of all ranked schools in New Jersey. The rankings are composed of the following factors. Math and reading proficiency and math and reading performance. And you can read about those metrics and how they configure the rankings on U.S. News and World Report's website. Congratulations to the following school communities for receiving this outstanding achievement. Linkroft Elementary School, Navisink Elementary School, River Plaza Elementary School, Nut Swamp Elementary School, Fairview Elementary School, Ocean Avenue Elementary School, Middletown Village Elementary School. And Thompson Middle School was also recognized as one of the best-in-middle schools in the state. So, congratulations to those schools on that outstanding achievement. And finally, I mentioned it earlier, we're still awaiting the results of our building utilization and boundary analysis. I check in weekly with Mr. Haber just to see where we are in the process. But given the size and scope of the work that we've asked him to undertake and the re-geocoding of all the residencies and where students exist currently, certainly this is, is quite the heavy lift. He is hopeful that we will have that report back in a couple of weeks. Then, it will be reviewed with the board and the administrative team and a presentation by Mr. Haber and his associates will be made to the school community. So, we'll be announcing those dates as soon as we get them. This will also kickstart back into action our strategic planning. And our next phase of that will be working in subcommittees. So, once we have that report back, I'll be reaching out to the members of that strategic planning committee to assign their subgroup so that way we can get underway with using all of that information to craft our strategic plan. So, those are our next steps. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Alpholm. Okay, I need a motion to approve ten A and B.
So, second?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Abstentions?
I'm abstaining on A and B.
Need a motion to approve Business Office Consent Agenda eleven A through I.
Second?
Discussion? I have a quick question.
Amy, I have a question on the transfers. I saw that there was a hundred and forty-eight thousand five hundred transferred to the Fund for Performing Arts budget. Can you just confirm if that was, those were the funds that were reallocated from the administrative salaries? That was, it was supposed to be four percent in the budget. Three percent, does that money come, did that come from that difference?
The money, I don't, I don't have the transfer in front of me. I don't think that we transferred that as salaries, but there were, there was no other.
It was out of the, I think it was like the child study team budget?
Again, I'd have, I'd have to look at it, you know, but it, the transfer is there, all of the ins and outs. So, whatever is listed there is the corresponding entry, then that's where the money came from. So, if child study team size were on there, then that's where it came from. I know there's several things listed.
Yeah, no, I saw it had it broken out to what, what each, what we got and everything.
Yeah, I mean, that transfer obviously is self-balancing. So, wherever that, whatever the flip side and entry is, that's where the money came from.
Thank you. Okay, motion to approve?
I agree with the motion.
Second? All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Abstentions?
I'm voting no on ID number on the Bill's List. I thought that was four. So, through I.
Through I?
Didn't you say through I?
A through I, yes.
A through, so I'm voting no on ID number seven eight one one. P.O. number?
On the Bill's List?
On the Bill's. P.O. number two six zero 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 three nine oh. Yep?
I'm voting no on that one also.
I am as well.
I am also.
So, we have Mrs. Hamnitt, Mr. Soprowski, and Mrs. Minuies.
Okay, motion to approve twelve, recognition of superintendent of schools consent agenda twelve A through K and fourteen through eighteen, not thirteen.
So A through K.
And 14 through 18.
Second?
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
I am voting on harassment intimidation, letter A. No on guesses and yes on the nose.
And Amy?
Let me, let me just write that down first.
Amy, there's only one this month we're voting on, so just to know.
Okay, Mrs. Caminiti?
On 12A, I am abstaining.
Good, that vote's done, good. Need a motion to approve 12K 13.
So, second?
Roll call, Amy.
Mrs. Caminiti?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mrs. Minuys?
Yes.
Mrs. Skelasky?
Yes.
Mr. Sopraski?
Yes.
Mr. Tulp?
Yes.
Mrs. Wright?
Yes.
Mrs. Tobacco? Mr. Capone?
Yes, and congratulations, Mr. Dory. Before I move to old business, Julian, or Jillian Borashi, do you have anything to say, or, you good? All right. Moving to old business, anybody have any old business to discuss?
I have old business. I'd like to bring up to our board again that I'd like to go back to two things. I have two focuses I want to address. I want to make a motion for, one is I'd like us to go back to having Committee of the Whole meetings. I also, the second motion, I would like us to have a workshop meeting.
Well, hey, hey, can I ask you one more thing?
What?
If you have one motion, if you're making that motion, we have to do that motion first, and then we get to the second motion.
Okay, then I'll put it together. I'd like to go back to a Committee of, a workshop meeting, and at the workshop meeting, we could have a Committee of the Whole meeting. That's my motion.
Second?
So two separate days, is that right?
No.
Say no.
Oh, yes, it is two second days, it's two separate days. It's a Committee, it's a workshop meeting on one day with the Committee of the Whole at the workshop. And then you come back a week later, and you have your regular voting meeting. So you know what you're voting on.
So what your motion is, is that you'd like to make a motion to have workshop meetings monthly, and you go to Committee of the Whole?
For that, I do have a question. When you say go to Committee of the Whole, do you mean that for all committees?
All committees.
All right, so then we should really do that in two separate motions. So there should be one motion to make all committees Committee of the Whole, and then the second motion, once that's dealt with, the second motion would be a motion to have workshop meetings, which, so a workshop meeting would be a duly noticed, as would Committee of the Holes, they're duly noticed public meetings.
Didn't, I, that's what I said, you want to do it, I said that the first time, but I gave the two motions at the same time.
There's a difference, though, between a workshop meeting and Committee of the Whole. I just want to make sure that, so the Board Secretary can record it. You want all the committees to be converted to Committee of the Whole, and you want a workshop meeting.
Okay, let's start this way. Can we, I have a motion that we go to having a workshop meeting.
Second?
So just so everybody's aware, before we vote on this, it's going to be approximately $10,000 to $20,000 more to have this period.
You know what? I think we should not go out and do the guy for $10,000 to evaluate. That evaluation that, that almost gets us put off $10,000.
I'm just telling you this, you're right.
Yes, I understand, but we need someone.
I don't think you should put a dollar sign on transparency and public information. I think we have to go back to doing this the right way.
I'm gonna ask you, I'm just, I just made a statement. My only statement was you're waiting your attorney out here the whole time.
We always have workshop meetings. We always have them, they're informative to us that we can learn and it's informative.
So I'm not saying yes or no, I'm just telling you that you have to.
Why is it $10,000? Wait, one more meeting, even if we have that number, why is it $10,000, $10,000 to have one meeting?
Because you have approximately 12, you have approximately 12 meetings, times $200 an hour, times four hours in a meeting, five hours, that's about $10,000.
He's talking about the lawyer, the lawyer.
Correct.
At a, at a workshop meeting, do you have to have a lawyer at it?
It's a public, it's a public court.
We're not voting, we're not voting, we're not having, we're not talking with the public, we're having a workshop meeting.
No, no, a workshop meeting would require public comment.
Correct.
It would require public comment, and it should require public comment.
Correct.
Well, I think it's money well spent. I agree with you.
It was already seconded. I seconded it.
Just a discussion.
Does this mean that there'd be no committee meetings at all? Everything would be at this one?
Now, this motion is just for the workshop.
Right now, there's two.
Right, there's, there's two different motions. This particular one is just for the workshop. Like, the schedule is now included, two public monthly meetings.
Correct.
Yep.
Where there's no action at the workshop, but there's action at the conference.
Amy Rovell?
Can I just ask a clarifying question, please? This is to our attorney. I thought you said that we would have to vote on being a Community, Committee of the Whole first, not just for a workshop meeting.
No, they're two completely separate things.
No, I understand that, but I thought before you said that.
No, but you can vote whatever order you want to go in, is fine. So, for instance, if the workshop meeting passes and the Committee of the Whole fails, then you would still work on the subcommittee structure, but you would have a workshop meeting to discuss everything that was discussed in the subcommittee structure. The other way around, if the workshop motion fails, and then the Committee of the Whole...
Then we're doing it all.
Yep, and then you're gonna have, every single committee meeting is gonna be a duly advertised.
Yeah, we operated like that in the past when I first got on the board, so I understand that part of it, but I, I just wanted to make sure about the order.
Rovell?
So this is, we're voting on the workshop first?
We're voting on the workshop first.
Establishing a monthly workshop meeting. Mrs. Caminiti?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mrs. Minuys?
Yes.
Mrs. Skelasky?
Yes.
Mr. Sopraski?
Yes.
Mr. Tulp?
Yes.
Mrs. Wright?
Yes.
Mrs. Tobacco?
Yep.
Mr. Capone?
Yes.
Now I'd like to, now I'd like to make my second motion that we go to a Committee of the Whole.
Second? Anybody, discussion?
I have a question, does that mean we're at this workshop?
Mrs. Tobacco, I'm sorry, can you just speak in the mic?
At that workshop meeting, that is not Committee of the Whole meeting?
That could be fine. So it's only two meetings a month, it's no subcommittees.
It's one additional meeting, correct.
Right.
All the committees.
Well, we always have, we always have additional meetings, and we meet separately from the committee meeting, so now you're combining all the committee meetings.
It's a workshop, and then we're doing our voting meeting in the month, oh, we're doing a workshop meeting.
Both public meetings, yes.
Committee of the Whole, perfect command.
These committee meetings, are they held during the day or at night?
No, they're held at night.
Night.
Just like this.
Just like this, so the public can.
I don't have one.
You could share.
So, so is the motion, just to clarify, the motion is to include all of the subcommittees that are currently formed to do, although it would be a Committee of the Whole at the workshop?
Yes.
So we're not getting all the committees?
All the committees are done at the whole.
Out of the public, of course, we can't do personnel. Personnel, we do as we always did in closed session. Well, whatever we do.
Anybody else, discussion? Amy Rovell?
Mrs. Caminiti?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mrs. Minuys?
Yes.
Mrs. Skelasky?
No.
Mr. Soprasky?
Yes.
Mr. Tulp?
No.
Mrs. Wright?
Yes.
Mrs. Tobacco?
Yes.
Mr. Capone?
Yes.
Motion can.
Now moving on to...
One more thing, I just have a question. That will start in November, right? Because we started, we voted on it in November.
I think we have to do a new calendar now, because we have to end next day.
You just have to add an extra day and take away all the ones.
I make a motion that we start this in November.
Yes, we have to do a calendar.
Let's pick a date.
Love it.
Next Tuesday? Were you crazy? Maybe that's a good thing, I'll take my mom on this.
Okay, the board meeting is the 25th, so you want to do it probably the week after 18th. I'll bring up Tuesday, November 18th.
Is everybody good with Tuesday, November 18th?
I'm not. As my committee knows, I'm, I'm traveling that week for work, so, but you guys can beat the workshop meeting without me needing to.
So it's four people that are up. So the 10th is gonna be a little hard, though, only because I think the finance bills have to come in about that second, that third week, right?
I mean, right, we wouldn't have all of the financial reports done.
When are your financial reports done?
I think it's like the 15th usually, is all it?
Yeah, I mean, we usually finalize them the week before the board meeting.
It doesn't have to be a Tuesday.
So the 19th?
No, it doesn't have to be a Tuesday.
It could be a Wednesday, it could be a Monday. It needs to be a few days before the voting meeting. It could be Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, the 17th, 18th, or 19th.
Gary, you're up the whole week for work.
I'll be in Idaho for work.
Deb, you're up the whole week too?
Gavin, Georgia the whole week.
Kat, you're up the whole week? So that week's not gonna work, anyway.
Oh, then we have to move it up to the week before.
You guys could do a doodle.
We need to have a work.
Being that we're just starting this, for this meeting, can we have them come in via Zoom? Can we have the board members join us via Zoom?
If they're on work, how would that work?
At nighttime.
I don't know if they're...
I don't know either, I'm just throwing something out there to make it work. We only have two meetings this month.
Deb says she's on work, so that's why I don't know if it's gonna be feasible.
Well, I've also, I mean, listen, I've also, and again, and I'll address this, you know, to our attorney, I've also been told that that was only a consideration during the pandemic to be allowed to do a meeting virtually by the board. It's now back in person, so I don't think that's based on...
It is my understanding that there is this board move to go back in person, because we're all sitting here, and then allow a different, you would have to allow the public participation the same way in which board members.
Correct, which the majority of this board has been against since the pandemic. I have not, but the majority of this board has been against that, so I just wanted to make that clear.
So you want to try and start this in December?
No. No, I really would like to do it in November.
So we may not have enough board members here, that's what I'm trying to...
It's way too early, we're not ready.
There's no bills that are ready, but...
We need to wait till after the bills list.
Right, Amy, just, so we usually try to have our committee meetings the week before the board meeting, because that's when we have most of the information that we need that goes on the agenda. If you hold the meeting earlier in the month, it's fine, but there may be things that happen between then and the board meeting that then we would not get a chance to discuss with the committee.
This is what we do, everybody just email me and Amy the 17th on what, what two days you have available, and we'll figure out.
But it looks like to me that we won't be having committee meetings, so Kat's gone the week, and Deb's gone the week, and Gary's gone the week.
Well, I don't know what meetings are.
So how are we gonna even have committee meetings that month?
Well, just, just to be clear, last night, Curriculum and Student Services moved their meeting to November 24th for that consideration, just to be clear.
So as I just said, everybody email me and Amy and let us know what dates, two days you're available in November and December.
Meeting the 30th.
Correct, from the 17th on.
It sounds like you will have a quorum with five.
So we just pick a date then, so?
Well, it sounds like Deb's gonna be here on the 24th, right? Who's not gonna be here on the 24th?
You can't do the 24th.
The 25th is the board meeting, right?
Yeah, two of us.
It's gonna be the week before.
I'm just gonna say, the last time we can just move off, it's just email me and Amy, tell us the two dates you have, and we'll, we'll figure out a date from there.
But what month are we talking, first?
November and December. Let's get ahead of the December curve, because we just voted on it.
Well, let me just summer that, let's see if we can do that. So that's definitely, the problem is, is that when we do this, like the appointment, the interviews of the special ed attorney, we haven't even done that, and we motioned that two months ago. Things never come to fruition, so if we're not gonna decide things, send in dates, we might not get an answer.
Why wouldn't you get an answer sending dates?
I'm just saying, we, we haven't gotten an answer on the special ed attorney yet. I'm afraid we walk away, we're not gonna have enough that we're meeting.
No.
If everybody's giving me two dates for November, we're gonna rearrange the dates based upon our Tuesday that we have, maybe they'll make them to the workshop, that's why I'm saying, just send me your two dates, this way we can make it work. We can do one the 24th and then the next week.
I can do the whole week of the 17th through the 21st. Amy, please take my notes, in November, the 17th through the 21st, any day you, not day, night, any night you want, I can do, I'm available. That's for November.
And the rest of the board, please email me like I just asked everybody. Okay? Okay, is there anybody that has any new business?
Yeah, I would just like to make a motion for an RFP for a new audit company.
Second?
Well, the only thing that I'll discuss is, we are actually just about completed with our audit for the school year that ended June 30th, 2025, so that work is virtually done at this point.
And virtually.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't trust it.
Waste of money.
I would send it back.
And that's our money that he wasted.
I want to pay that bill.
Well, the other thing I also want to clarify is, the audit firm doesn't do our financial reporting, we do. I mean, we issue our reports every month, we put together the financial statements, you know, they come in, and audit this, they come in and they take a look at the supporting documentation to make sure that controls are working properly. I'm sorry, I'm trying to explain, I actually was an auditor, so I do know what it is. I am a CPA and I did audit work. It's, they come in, they don't do your financial report, and they come in and they test controls, they look at supporting documentations for transactions. I just want to make sure everybody's clear about what an audit actually is. It's not, it's not doing the financial report.
Let's wait, public comment. There was a motion for an RFP, wasn't there?
Amy, you're done.
Right, well, I just want to make clear, if we do an RFP, which is fine, it will be for the audit for this current year. It will be for the audit, we already have, we've already appointed the auditor for this year, we approved the contract, you know, we're almost done with it, so the audit would be for the year July 1st, 2025, through June 30th, 2026, which would, that audit would take place next summer into the fall.
Hold on, we already, we already paid for '25 to '26.
It's, no, I'm saying, that's what you would be putting out an RFP for, because we're, right now, we're auditing, they're doing the audit of '24 to '25. Right, and that's almost done, we've already appointed them, we've engaged them.
So then this motion would be taking effect in June 1st, I guess, of 2026?
It would be when they do the audit of this current fiscal year, which won't conclude until June 30th, 2026.
July 1st, 2026.
Right, so the work would be done in late summer of '26, fall of '26. I just want to make everybody clear on that.
So it's impossible to get a second audit, regardless of cops, it's impossible, you're saying, to get a second audit?
Well, I'm not saying it's impossible, but the, but the state does require the audits to be filed by December 5th. It's now going into the beginning of November, that would be, you know, we wouldn't even be able to appoint an auditor until the November meeting, we would not meet our statutory deadline.
It sounds like there's official records, but if there was suspicion of misappropriation of funds, we might want to hire a second auditor.
All right. Mark, do you want to withdraw your motion for later on, because we can't do anything until June 25th? Mark, do you want to withdraw your motion for later on because we can't do anything until June 26th?
No. And I'd also like, I'd like any interviews to be done as the group.
But, well, then, we also need to be clear then, what you're putting, I mean, like I said, you know, the audit for this year is virtually completed.
I think, I honestly think we table it and just don't pay the bill, we make a motion, don't pay the bill.
No, I think we, if you guys want to do it, we start it.
Let's just get them, start looking down.
They'll stop, they'll keep for next year.
Do not table it.
That's the right thing to do.
I don't think it hurts to get a cost estimate, which is what an RFP is for a second audit, saying work that's already been contracted for.
Right.
It's just a cost estimate.
We need to finish the board discussion.
An RFP usually implies that it's going to do more than one dinner. I made the motion in the second.
Amy, roll call.
So I just want to be clear, what exactly is the motion?
I'm going to say it's for July 1st, 2026, because unless we're going to disrupt everything after '24, '25, it'd be more money out.
Disrupt it.
I'm concerned about this audit and whether or not it's.
Partially.
Partially.
I'm concerned whether or not there is going to be a thumb on the scale with this audit.
Yeah.
I have that concern.
Based on? Mark, based on?
Oh, based on the public comment and the information that's been brought to light?
What would you mean by thumb on the scale?
I don't know, I don't, if our auditor is making contributions to political candidates running in our district, that's concerning to me, and it should be concerning to everybody. It should, there should be independence with the people handling our finances and auditing our finances and the people that are approving them.
Amy, I have a question, a process question, so you just mentioned that the audit is due by December 5th, what happens if we don't have an audit ready by December 5th?
Well, then the NJDOE would take, I don't know exactly what actually it would take, I'm just saying that is a, that is the statutory deadline.
Is it that right?
I mean, it could impact whatever the state gives you, I mean, I don't think they're going to, I don't know, I'd have to get back to them with the.
Amy, how many years has this auditor been doing our business?
They've been, they've been our auditor for several years, I don't remember exactly how long.
Do you like them, you don't like them?
You know, they've, they've always, you know, they've always worked fine with us, I mean, they.
Mark, who would you like to?
I made my motion and it was second.
What's your motion detail, stopping now?
I would like an RFP for a new audit company for next year.
For next year, 20, 25, 26 years, starting in June, July 1st, 2026.
22nd?
Yep, you had a roll call.
Mrs. Caminiti?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mrs. Minuis?
Yes.
Mrs. Skolasky?
Yes.
Mr. Soparowski?
Yes.
Mr. Tulp?
Yes.
Mrs. Wright?
Yes.
Mrs. Tobacco?
Yes.
Mr. Capone?
Yes. Is there any other new business to discuss?
Yes, I do have, I do have some. Okay, this past week, we were at New Jersey School Boards, and while I was there, I took a lot of different classes, a lot on ethics, a lot on strategic planning, and out of every class that I took, and I have a list of them, it comes out to transparency, public input, including our parents in decision makings. If we ever want to really address the issues of our school district, it's going to take a referendum, or it's going to take trust, and each one emphasized on how important it is to get the trust of the community. And I think that we have been lacking in that, there were a lot of good suggestions, maybe a lot of people that maybe we need to have school boards come in and start working with us as a board, because it starts with us and then it goes to the community. The classes were good, I was really impressed with them, but each one just kept coming back to transparency and trust, which is something that we really need to work on, we have such a great district, and listening to people at these classes of what goes on in their district, we top them, top them over the top of them with so many better things, and I hate to see that loss, because the only people that lose when this is going on are our kids. So I really would like to see us take a step to start working on this and building trust, because no matter what comes down the line, people are going to say, oh, you think you want to run for the run, let me tell you, it's going to take a referendum to fix what's going on in this district, and we're not going to get it done if we can't regain the trust. So I think that that's a step we have to work on, and that's why I took on these classes. I also took on one that was really close, Leonor and I have been talking about this for a long time, about the trades. It was an exceptional class on how we get our kids into union trade, and they really do provide the training, and I have information here, there's a class trip that you could take our kids on, and they even suggest starting at middle school. Middle school's not as engaged as the high school, but it's a taste of what kids could want to learn and maybe possibly go into. There is a, there's a class trip on May 26th that we get, you know, people to go. They emphasize on how our kids come out with no college bills, it's like, almost like a free education, they come out with a job, the training, it's amazing, and all the people that spoke about it, and it was all different trades, it just wasn't one, it's an option, so I really hope that we can really step on this and get this moving, because we've been talking about it for years and years, and I know we have issues with money, whatever, but this is something that's so important to so many kids in our district, that I just hope we step on it, so I want to make sure I give this to you and pass it on. Also, there's been a lot of different school community events going on that I enjoy going to, I've been to a few Fall Fests. Last night, I went to New Momma's Haunted Hallway, oh my God, those elementary kids, what a job. First thing I walked to the door, they scared me, and I'm just like that, I kind of jumped, I didn't expect these little kids popping out. I also heard Harman had a good one, I didn't know that that was taking place, I would have loved to have gone to see that, but all these great activities that our parent groups are doing that really help out in our schools and bring our community together, I just want to, oh, I also attended Haunted Woods, exceptional job this year, exceptional, it was really good, the line was like it was 10 years ago, all the way down the driveway to get in, so I'm sure they mean well on that, the kids. I just want to remind everybody, the North Play is coming up, like you said earlier, the 21st and the 22nd. Ocean Avenue is having a gift auction on the 21st, if anybody's interested, you can contact OASPTA at yahoo.com. They always have a great gathering, and if any other schools want to send me their information, I love to go to gift auctions, we have a whole group of us that travel around, so let us know your information. Also, the North-South game Friday night here for the state playoffs, it's going to be a packed house, I'm sure, even though it's Halloween. I just hope everybody can come out and enjoy it, watch our teams, we'll have twice this year, Thanksgiving and Friday. And that's all I have.
Great, does anybody else have a new?
Yeah, so High School South is actually hosting on Tuesday, November 11th, exploring skilled career paths instead of going down the college route, so you can attend that on Tuesday, November 11th at 7:00 PM at South Media Center.
Thank you. Anyone else for new business?
Yeah, one quick thing, Frank, I don't want to prolong anything, but I think it saves us, it'll save us some time. Earlier on the topic of the public comment thing, I think there was a lot of talking past each other, and I don't think there's a lot in dispute, and I think if it's at all possible, I would be in favor of, like, in other words, if we're trying to accomplish something that is already policy, there's no need to send it to policy, and I'd be in favor of, if it would help to clarify on the form of the agenda that public comment, to the extent that any question is raised that a board member administrator is able to answer on the spot, we will endeavor to do so, and to the extent we can't, it'll be investigated and responded to as soon as practicable, which is the board policy. So that's all I'm saying, if that, I think it resolves the dispute, and if it's a matter of, if what Joan wanted was to clarify that on the form of the agenda, I don't have any problem with that, and I I just think if it were to be sent to policy, that wouldn't, we'd be talking past each other.
I think, I think the issue was, it was the understanding of it, that that's acceptable, right? I think that's what, you know, we turned away somebody that came up to the speaker last time that spoke twice about the same, or different, you know, things, and I think it's the overall understanding of what the actual policy is, right?
And not only that, it's the facts, all, everybody that's getting up and asking a question is, they want facts, we have facts, we passed the budget, we didn't increase, people have curiosity, there are people around the community spreading misinformation. It would only benefit us to give the right information, so that we stop this stuff going around. That's all, and it really does, when the misinformation goes out, it affects our administration, because they look like they don't know what they're doing with all this misinformation. And if they can sit here and clarify it, it not only clears them, but it gives the public the correct information to go back with, and we're video, so that correct information is on a video. So anybody who else needs to do it can go back and watch it, it's just the silence is annoying, that we can't give people, we can't give people the right answers when we know we have them. That's all, I'm just passionate about that, let's just stop, we have so many good things, and we're blowing it by not answering people.
Okay. I'm now going to open the microphone up to public comment, if you'd like to do a public comment, please step forward, state your name and address directly.
Hi, Catherine Adder, Middletown, New Jersey, this is an easy one, but I just wanted to offer some advice as you're struggling to schedule a meeting that everybody can attend. Number one, I would recommend that each of you provides more than two dates only, which would maximize the opportunity for overlap. Number two, there are tools that you can use to do so quite easily without all having to email Mr. Capone, you can look at a Google survey or a tool called Doodle, they're free to the public, that's all.
Hi, Kristen Rooney, Middletown, New Jersey, I kind of just have to go back to the word trust. We basically found out that your auditor, who you're about to pay $27,000 to, who audited your books for the year '24, '25, which we know was a bit of an epic year as far as the budget went, has a financial interest in the election, this election for this board, and a lot of you just kind of shrugged, and you're like, well, it's done. We do have financials ourself, I'm sure it's fine, it's done, I know what an auditor is for, an auditor is to check your financials, so you're saying, we should just be like, okay, we trust that it's right, I mean, I'm sure, I know you know how to write a budget, and I would hope that it's not incorrect, but the auditor is a double check on what you're doing, and what was done here last year, we had no trust in, and we had very good reason for it. So I'm very, very glad that you made a motion to get a new auditor for next year, but the audit of this past year is a problem. And to have nine of you shrug and be like, I don't know, let's just pay for it, let's just pay $27,000 for something. Okay, I appreciate it, not nine shrugs, but for the administration and some of you to be like, oh, I guess we'll just pay for it, it's done, that's very sad. I would ask for you to try harder and be better.
On that point, I'd like to emphasize that a RFP is a request for proposals, so getting a request for proposal to redo work that has already been done, contracted for $27,000.
I'm sorry, can you please state your name?
Jacqueline Adder, Middletown, New Jersey. It is a cost estimate, so that you can make an informed decision on whether or not that cost is worth having the work done a second time. I think that that's valuable information for the community to consider and the board to decide on with the information. At the moment, $27,000 for all we know could be extremely inflated and could be partially inflated because of the collaboration it has with current or future expected board members. We don't know, because the public hasn't seen multiple RFPs, so to say the work is done, there's a deadline, doesn't mean we're deciding to do the work again, it doesn't mean we're deciding to pay again. It means we're having the information on how much it would cost, so for, again, for the board to say, we can't do that because the work's already been done, I don't think is a good answer, especially if we do think that there's a chance that we might want to look again at the numbers, depending on what that audit comes back with. I think it would be super helpful to have some backup estimates on what it might cost to do the work a second time.
Eric Dowell, Middletown resident, I'm not going to talk about the audit anymore, we're going to talk about the fun topic of banked cap. And why it's important for everybody in the town to understand just a little bit about it, even though it involves math. It works, it allows boards to have some flexibility around the 2% tax cap. If you, in year one, raise taxes 1%, you bank 1% for future years, but you must use that 1% within three years, otherwise it expires. It's been explained to me that a board should always use banked cap before it expires, that the failure to do so is described to me as budget malpractice, because it is a failure that continues to compound and compound and compound into eternity, and we're about to see why. Because as it turns out, this board at some point between 2011 and 2023 failed to utilize all its banked cap and let some expire. And I'm reading from a presentation that was made to the Facility Finance Committee on February 21st, 2023, entitled Budget Update Number Two. And this was, I assume, was prepared by the administration, I assume there's a lot of math behind it, which I appreciated, it says that the cumulative effect of the failure to use that banked cap, including compounded, amounted to $63 million in lost revenue for this district. And by contrast, some folks up here were screaming financial calamity over a budget gap on our preliminary budget that was one-sixth of that amount. Why is it important to focus on something that's done, that's in the past? A few reasons. One, because some people on this stage, some people out in the community continue to myopically focus on Trenton ruining our budget. Yes, we fully admit that the funding formula is a problem for districts like this, but again, the number, $63 million. Two, transparency, I'm reading from an internal version of the budget presentation from February 2023, there was a whole slide on banked cap that had that $63 million number, and then I also have with me the final version of that budget presentation that was presented to the public in April, that slide was removed. That information was not presented to the public, and I'm sure we all can understand why, it was embarrassing. So when we talk about transparency, it's important that everyone understands this concept, it's important that this never happens again, and the final point, unless somebody has a very fancy calculator, I assume they would need to go back and check, but that $63 million number continues to grow, it continues to compound. So the mistake of not using that banked cap, I don't know if it's in the 70s or the 80s, because we know how compounding works, it's a hockey card, so for the finance folks, I would ask that we follow up so the entire community understands what that mistake costs and continues to cost as we go forward. And again, it can never happen again, and certainly when we're talking about our financial issues, it's not one thing, and it's not just Trenton, it is severe mistakes that were made in the past.
Margaret Rizalov, Middletown, I just want to explain what I read about the audit business, and perhaps the lawyer can confirm what I'm going to say. It was, someone put out the information of how much money was donated to the political candidates, and it was published, and if you give over a certain amount of money, and I'm not sure how much, it has to be, people have to see what it is, so even though it seems unethical, it is legal, it is legal, not that I'm defending it, and a mayor has donated money to political candidates, someone. Someone on the board, a family member has donated, other businesses have donated. And again, although it is legal, the question is, is it ethical? Thank you.
Dan Lazon, Middletown. I have another question that was a hotly contested topic over the last few months, of some scoreboards, and the advertising that was supposed to offset the costs. I believe it was announced last month, that there was a contract awarded for $10,000 for five years for the scoreboards. Is that the only advertisement that's going on the scoreboards?
No.
Is there more space than that?
It's digital. The digital advertisements.
For the board on the back?
Yeah. So there are some static ones that will be there, but most of the ones that we're anticipating using are digital, so they can be filtered through throughout the games and throughout events.
Okay.
So it's pretty much unlimited space.
Okay, well, that's good, yeah. Because my concern was, if you look at a $10,000 a year payoff on a million and a half, that's 150 years. So it's not going to offset any cost if we stick to 10 grand. Thank you.
Ashley Studd, a resident of Middletown. We are looking for your leadership here, for the financial mess we're in, to get us out of this. The trouble with the things that save Middletown schools is finding, is that they keep finding stuff. You're not being transparent about your connections to people that we are contracted with. Your job is to abstain from votes if you are connected with them. And my understanding is, you're not. And that is a problem. We have to be cleaner. You have to be transparent. If you have a relationship with someone, if you got a donation from someone, if you're working with a pet that got a donation from someone, you need to be transparent and say, hey, I got a connection to this guy. He gave me $10,000 for my campaign. I'm going to abstain from this vote. We would respect you so much if you did that. It is frustrating that we are like putting on our detective glasses to like find this stuff after the fact. It's almost good that it came to a head, that like these people are so involved now, but it's also so disturbing. I'm asking you, be more transparent. Do the right thing. Show up to these meetings with things you want to do. Joan, that was fantastic. Trace is a great thing. AI is scary, and trace is one of those things that's going to be good for our kids, for our future. Thank you for like legit looking out for us. Mark, RP thing, thank you. You guys, people are doing good work. I appreciate it. Some of us need to work a little bit harder. Please do.
Rebecca Lara, Middletown. So after the last meeting, I did go, and I did do research on signs on, at schools for football stadiums, and 10K was actually on the upper end of the amount. So you're welcome. I did it. I could send you the links if you want to see what our comparables are. Going off that, I would expect from a financial standpoint, that when contracts are being entered, or agreements are being made, that there are comps done. It's pretty easy to access Google, and to find other schools that are doing something. Additionally, talking about being creative, it's so easy to follow their districts. I work in an industry where I often have to call my competitors and ask them, what are you doing with this? How can, can you help me? Can you tell me what methodology you're using? And then maybe I can apply that to what I'm doing. You know, it's not, it's schools, it's education. We should be able to talk to other schools. Okay, so that's all that. The last thing, this is something new, it's unrelated to everything we've been talking about. As we're coming up on the holiday season, I, every year, this happens, where I hear whispers about kids not being able to afford lunch. It breaks my heart. A couple of years ago, I called my elementary school, and I asked, could I donate money? Could I just go give a couple hundred dollars? And if a kid doesn't have lunch, you can use this money. And they told me, no, that I had to go through all these different phone numbers. I called all these different people. I honestly don't know where I ended up, but I never got a call back. I left some voicemails, never got anything back. So I told, I would send my daughter with some money, like, if you see anything, you know, just like give the kids the money. Which isn't the best way to do it, right? Like, it should be in a way that they feel protected, and their privacy is maintained. So I would like to establish some sort of lunch donation policy on a district level, where parents or the community can donate if they want to, and then lunch accounts can be topped up through the app. If that's something that's possible, I would gladly participate in that.
I believe it may be something that's acceptable, so we'll look into that. It's a great idea.
And we ensure that students that don't have lunch are provided lunch.
Is it the same lunch, though? Because I'm.
Yes.
It's the same exact lunch.
It's the same lunch.
I guess the goal is different.
It used, yeah.
Okay, so maybe that was something that's, okay.
And families that can't afford lunch can apply for a program where they get free lunch.
Yeah, I understand that, but.
I understand, but just in case, you know, just that, I don't know if you know that, but they can apply. But I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, just because, you know, with the limits, some people are right at the cost of not getting food.
Some people don't feel comfortable in doing it.
I'm sorry, the only thing I would add to that is, we have had other people approach us with the same idea. The issue becomes, if someone gives a donation for lunch, or for lunches, the list, we have a very long list of children who have outstanding lunch balances. And how to divide that money up becomes an issue. I mean, how would you, I mean, you know, I haven't, I haven't looked at it in the last month or so, but it's a very large number of outstanding lunch balances. So it, you know, trying to, if someone says, well, here's $500, well, who do we give that to? There's many, many, many.
What do we do with the outstanding balances at the end of the year, let's say they can't?
Well, you know, that's a great point. You know, the state has changed its rules, that we really, we have very limited ways to be able to, you know, we can send reminders to collect, but, you know, we don't have a lot of leverage to collect these outstanding balances, and it's a problem all across the state. I mean, there's districts that have hundreds of thousands of dollars in outstanding lunch debt. And I understand what you're saying is coming from a good place, but then administratively, if somebody hands us an amount of money, how do we choose? How do we allocate which students' lunch balances are going to be paid off? There's a lot of them.
Well, if we're going to write them off anyway, wouldn't, I mean, just put it to the overall balance?
But who do you pick? I mean, there's proud, you know, there's hundreds of kids.
Amy, Amy, at the end, we also.
We're getting money in, right? We're getting money in, which we normally have money in. So would it make sense to have that money that comes in rather than not?
Your attention to try and help.
Can I just, I just want to bring up one idea. I know AI is scary, but in situations like this, AI is wonderful, because you can just assign a number to every student. It's randomized, you can just assign the number, and then tell AI, I have this amount of money. Pick, like, fill, like, use this amount to pay off a certain number, and it'll just go through and say, 1, 7, 10, 11. And it's random.
Right, and so you're basically suggesting a lottery system.
But it's not a lottery, it's just random.
Well, that's what random.
I'm just suggesting hoping it's involved versus not.
I'm just fleshing it out so that you understand.
Wait a minute, can I just say something? Can I ask a question? Why not get the donation? Because we don't know what kind of donation you're talking about. Let's just say we get 5,000 in donations, and you have 35,000 worth of bills.
It's a lot more than 35,000.
I know, I understand, but I'm just throwing out some numbers. Why wouldn't you just take it, let's use 10,000 students, and 2,000 of them have bills? Just do a percentage. The money you have, a percentage goes to each student. So it just brings them debt, that's it. If somebody has 500, somebody has 100, it's a percentage.
We would have to go in and manually adjust hundreds of student accounts for all of this money.
But it's something, I understand, it's a job, but it's, do we not take the money? Somebody wants to give you money. Maybe somebody's going to give you a $10,000 set.
I'm not saying I'm against donations, I'm just, I'm just bringing the reality of how it's administered. And I don't know, and I would have, and I would have to see, I don't.
Why don't you email me, and we can brainstorm something?
Right, I mean, I'm just saying we need to discuss a more.
Yeah, I'd be happy to send a parent's account and start making.
Yeah, email me, and we'll brainstorm how we can make more money.
Catherine Adder, Middletown. What we just witnessed is a prime example of the dysfunction. You're saying that basically you have a massive unpaid bill in lunch debt from students, and the state has limited your availability to collect on that debt. At the end of the year, what happens to that debt currently?
It stays in place enough, and then eventually, when the students graduate, you know, we have the right of all.
Right. And so you have someone making a recommendation that the community come together to offset that debt, and your problem in accepting it is whose imaginary debt to relieve? Right? I mean, you're basically saying.
That's not a fair statement, because when you're talking about donations, when people give them, it was a very specific gift and a reason why. It was to feed underprivileged kids, or to feed kids that didn't have any money. On the list of students that have outstanding debt, that's not achieving that goal, that's just paying the balances on some people who just didn't pay. So there's two very, there's two very different things. Both of them are good, but the initial thing was to make sure that kids that don't have any money can eat. That is what the issue was, which I think everybody up here can agree with. The other issue is becoming, if we get that money, that's not achieving the goal of the donor, which is to make sure that the kids that don't have any money eat, it's just paying the balances of some people who just didn't pay. And if that's what she wants to do, that's great, and we can work all those things out, but that wasn't the altruistic purpose when she got up and said.
That was a very good distinction. Why did we then have a follow-up conversation for several minutes about how we would divide that donation amongst children?
I can't answer that question.
Right. So I think my point in coming up here is to point out the dysfunction in the budget conversations that are happening with the people at this table, period. You also had somebody follow up on her point to say that all of the kids that can't afford lunch already get lunch. That is an administrative failure, if that is in fact not true. If the kids that are cuspy are going without lunch, because they don't meet some threshold, and.
No, they get lunch. That's not correct. We turn kids away.
So then you're saying there's not in fact any tangible problem that her altruistic intention could impact, because we don't have a problem?
We have lots of kids with lunch careers that they let charge up an account. There's a distinction between kids that are on free introduced lunch, and kids that aren't, and just aren't paying their bill, that were racking up or going buy 100 cookies at lunch. I mean, you know, there's lots of accumulated bills.
Let's say a child doesn't pay, right? They just go through the line. They just tally that number, and then it goes onto a bill. And she's saying that that bill just.
Cool, so they are agreed. Two various separate issues. On issue number one, all kids are getting lunch. Whether they're on the unpaid list, or the free lunch list, all kids are getting lunch. So if people in the community have an altruistic feeling that they want to fix that, there's nothing to fix, is what you're telling me. Practically speaking, every kid gets lunch. That's what you're telling me.
We are, yeah, we're not allowed to not.
We're not allowed to not be.
Okay, great.
Now, the kids might not know that, the parents might not know that, right?
Right. But you have people talking about putting money towards that, right? So practically speaking, we go into more debt, which seems to be like an across-the-board issue, or you have altruistic people in the community that want to make sure hungry kids get food, and we can talk about ways in which we can take that altruistic intent and budget associated with it, and figure out how to put it to good use in this district. No?
Yeah, that's why I asked you to email me, so that way we can talk further about how to make it work.
Terrific.
Are there certain committee that that's in?
That was not on, yes.
No.
We can give you the last comment, close to a half hour.
You can extend it, it's a choice.
It's a half hour.
If you can extend it.
Yes, I'm not extending this time, but it'll be.
Somebody can make a motion if they want to.
I'll make a motion. Hold on. Right.
Sorry. You're the last speaker, go ahead.
All right. No, Joan made a motion to extend, so. And there was a second.
You can speak, Mary.
I'm going to have this sorted itself out first.
Yeah, I think we need to roll call.
You do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Why is the motion exactly?
Do you want to extend it?
To public comment.
How long to extend it for?
Yeah. 21 minutes. And I need to use the restroom. Stop.
Is there any more speakers?
10 more speakers, sorry.
So the motion is to extend public comment for 20 minutes.
Yeah, if we don't need 20 minutes, we don't need it. Let's give it to them too.
And Mrs. Menewies, you're making that motion?
Yes.
And who is second?
I second it.
I'll say this, Joan.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Upset you? Go ahead, Mary.
Hi, my name is Sarah. I am also new to the school community. I grew up in Middletown.
Sarah, I'm sorry, did you have a last name?
I do, it's Swack, and I am from Middletown. Grew up in Middletown, graduated from Sow. I now have a kindergartner, and a four-year-old who's going to be entering the school district next year, so trying to get more involved in the community. And one thing that I've noticed in coming to these meetings, and just a suggestion, I work in corporate America, if someone asks me a question at a meeting, I have the answer. The expectation is that that question is answered in the next meeting. So I feel like there should be an opportunity on your agenda, at the beginning of every meeting, post the questions that were asked, or the comments that were set in the last meeting, with the resolution or where we can find the answer. Because chances are, if people in this room, if one person is asking that question, all of us have that question. And if someone's getting an answer in private, that's not, they're not answering the question to the public. The second thing is, you said something about how there's two different types of students with this lunch program. There are students that are racking up debt because they don't have lunch. I would challenge you guys to look at those students' accounts. Are they racking up that debt because they can't afford lunch, and they haven't filled these programs, or they don't, they don't have a parent who knows how to do that? Those students could be kids in need that are not forgetting their lunch regularly, and they just don't have it. So just do that.
Good evening, Emily Donahue, Middletown resident. I'm going to read some things, but try to make it quick. My comments and questions tonight are around the expenses regarding the Board of Education's legal expenses. So Amy, just for record, I'm talking about account 101-000-262-520. I guess I do have a question. Is that where all liability insurance expenses are booked?
You know, I would have to have what you're looking at in front of me. I mean, I can't be expected to know everything.
No, no, I'm not saying, I'm not being accused, I'm sorry. I just want for the record to be referenced. This is the account I'm actually referencing. I do think it's liability, I just want to make sure the fact that the.
So can you repeat the account?
Yep, sure. So just since it's not in front of you, Amy, and I'm not being condescending.
I believe that is where our property casualty insurance goes.
Okay, and so liability?
Well, that, yeah, that probably.
Correct, I'm just trying to make sure. Liability, which is where if somebody was to sue you, and you go against the liability insurance, that's where it would go.
If it's not workers' comp, because workers' comp is set.
Correct. I think that's account 11-000-291-260. Okay, so over the last 10 months, we've heard from the board leadership, both here and out in the public, that insurance covers all legal fees for lawsuits. Can you clarify if all attorney fees are paid for by insurance, Amy?
Our insurance has deductibles for different lines of coverage.
What's our deductible?
It depends upon the line of coverage. I don't have the schedule in front of me. Some of them are $5,000, some of them are $15,000.
Perfect, so if it's below that, we pay that. So it's not going to insurance until we reach the premium? I'm sorry, the deductible?
Yes, we're responsible for deductibles.
Perfect. And then, correct me if I'm wrong, though, Amy, I do have the understanding that if And then, correct me if I'm wrong though, Amy, I do have the understanding that if we use the insurance, likely we see an increase in our premium?
If we use the insurance, the rates, you know, it could.
Yeah. So I did take a look at the financials, and I just want to make mention that from the 2022 to 2023 school year, we did pay about 1.4 million in liability insurance. I know that you and I talked, and I thank you for, I've been asking a lot of questions, Amy, you've been great with answering me, you as well, Dr. Alphone. So I do want to make mention though the fact that from then, 2022 to 2023 till now, we are at about 1.9 million in liability. That's about a 32% increase from 2022 to 23 till now. I just want to make mention the fact that this is driven by the use of legal fees. Whether that be about somebody individually, whether that be about a phone call to Bruce Bedula, which there's a lot of, and continues, like, our prices are gonna continue to rise, we're gonna see more of this. We are in a position where we really do not have time or money for reckless spending of legal expenses. So I'm going to encourage our board to start looking at those expenses more thoroughly. Because 32% increase on something that we do have control of, because we are in control of our legal expenses, should be top of mind for all of you. So I just encourage you all to continue to look at that. This is the taxpayer money, and it's not all going to the liability insurance. There's actually another account, we'll say that for another day. But if there's additional fees as well, it's quite hefty, we need money now. You're spending our money, whether that's through our insurance or through a direct bill. So please, just be more considerate with the taxpayer money. Thank you.
If I could just clarify, you know, since I'm involved in the renewals each year, you know, a lot of the increase, and it's not just for Middletown, is being driven by the increase in the property insurance rates. And you notice, I'm sure all of your homeowner's insurance have increased. We're seeing the same thing here in the district. There have been large increases in that line, but a lot of it is driven by the increase in the property liability as well. I don't know.
Oh, it's an answer.
That's up to the, that's up to the board president.
I think the conversation. No, I appreciate that, Amy. And absolutely, it is, could be increased by that as well. I just do, I know that when you do get your renewals, you get to look at your claims, you get to see maybe where those expenses are coming from. So I think that's an answer that we can figure out. My only question is, and really just to implore you all to continue to look at the legal expenses, I think we're spending a little bit recklessly when it comes to certain legal expenses. And, yeah, Amy, no fault to you, it's truly not. It's just making sure the fact that there's, the community can know that there has been a 32% increase when it comes to legal expenses. Thank you.
My name's Alice Rozanski, I'm a Middletown resident. I just wanted to comment further on the school lunch arrears topic. A lot of neighboring districts have education funds that fundraise to support various causes. There's a grant application process. This could be an option here. We have a lot of people in our community who would like to participate and give back. It's very encouraging. I'm happy to get in on an email with you, Amy. Thank you for bringing it up. So just wanted to bring in everyone's attention. I've heard time speaking in front of you all, a little nervous, but I've been to a lot of these meetings before. And I echo everybody's with working together. And I think establishing a fund to support our district would be a really wonderful bridge between the board and residents of Middletown. So, thank you.
Dan is on Middletown. Just one last addition to my last comment was, I wanted to make sure that this was publicly noted that the advertising group that was awarded the scoreboard contract also donated $10,000 to a Board of Ed campaign for three individuals with a lot of close ties to other township members and other members in this community. And that number absolutely overshadows even most other single contribu-, or total of other candidates. That one contribution is more than probably every other, every other candidate combined.
Scott Pearson, Middletown resident. So one thing I want to point out on the agenda that was not discussed tonight, number nine under reports, number A, code of ethics for school board members. There was no discussion by any board member regarding that topic. And separately, on the topic of paying for students' school lunches, imagine if HFA had donated that money to pay toward, pay for school lunches instead of putting it towards certain candidates running for Board of Education. Thank you.
Katie Littlepage, Middletown. This is a very long meeting. It's 9:54 PM. Meeting started at 7:30, and it doesn't have to be this way. To the new, the parents in the room, you said it's like your first meeting or so, and that you left, you left the September meeting, that was your first meeting, you left feeling really sad. I hear you. I've been coming to these meetings, I've been at pretty much every single meeting, I think, since March. And I always leave feeling so stressed and sad. And I remember when we moved to Middletown in 2021, my husband and I and our one-year-old at the time, who's now a kindergartner in the district. We moved from California, and he's always like, are you okay that we're in New Jersey? And I'm like, you know what? This place is incredible. Like, I'm just waiting for the other shoe to drop. And then it did drop this in March, when I realized the terrible leadership of this board and the mismanagement of our tax dollars by the leadership of this board. And that you're doing this to our children and the quality of their childhood. I could have been reading my son's bedtime story tonight, but instead I had to leave right after dinner so that I could be here. We should be involved, but it doesn't have to be this long. Leadership means that you have a choice in how you set the tone for these meetings. Mr. Capone, this meeting tonight, every time a suggestion was brought up, whether by one of your peers here on the board or by someone in the community, it seemed that your first reaction was to be negative. It seemed that your first reaction was to say no, and find a way not to do it, and find a way to stall about it. And that's a choice that you're making. You could make a choice to say, that's a great idea. Let me, let, how can we make this happen? And be positive and be collaborative. Because you, you're all unpaid volunteers, including you, Mr. Capone. You're an unpaid volunteer. You don't have to be here. And so it's confusing to me why, when there's so many members of the public who have taken time out of their day to be here because they care deeply about Middletown, and they care deeply about the quality of the childhood that Middletown will be providing their kids, paid for by everyone's tax dollars sitting in here. It's deeply disturbing to me that you're rushing us out the door, and you're trying to silence us. And when other members of the board say, let's let them continue to speak and try to be collaborative with us, you are saying, you're trying to talk over them and say, no, last comment, last comment. It doesn't, that's a choice. As the leader, you're making a choice. And even the way that this room is set up, all of us facing you, we could be set in a circle. We could be more collaborative and feel equals. As Ms. Menewies pointed out at her workshop that she went to, it's all about parent involvement. So I just want to highlight that and just let everyone know that the meetings don't have to be this way. They, these meetings could be a lot shorter, actually, if the board functioned better and communicated better. Because then we wouldn't have so much to get up here and, and say that we're disturbed by, by the mismanagement of our tax dollars that we're paying and by the mismanagement of our children's education. Thank you.
See, no one else getting further up, I'm gonna.
Sorry.
Oh, sure. Come on up.
Do, do we have advertisers for the digital, the digital advertising on the scoreboards? Is that?
That was probably approved last time.
Yeah.
For digital advertisers?
We have a company that, a vendor that is, that goes out and solicits them for us.
We've got, we've got the mix of digital and signage.
And signage.
So the, the deal that was approved last time was signage from the back.
That was a sign on the back.
But we have had, I think it was the US Army, we've had some digital ads. I, you know, we're, we're getting some more, that's more of a newer market. So we're, we're working on getting more. We've gotten a mix of both.
So we have a loan for the scoreboards, and then we're slowly chipping away at that loan with advertisers?
We have a five-year lease, capital lease on the scoreboards that we're paying off. Yes. And the revenue from this has also been anticipated in the budget to offset.
Okay. But we didn't have those advertisers until recently because we had to approve the company that goes out and gets it?
Right, but we just, this is the first year we budgeted for that revenue. So that.
Right.
So this is obviously.
I guess my point was that the scoreboards were purchased on a loan last year when we didn't have any money to fund the schools, and then we didn't have the advertisers until this year. So I feel like there was a disconnect.
The advertising piece was always part of the plan in implementing the scoreboards. It was never absent in that conversation. We were never, there was never a time where we considered the scoreboards and not offsetting the cost for them with advertising. Because our hope is that in the future, that that advertising will generate revenue for us.
I guess, yeah, my point is that it was a hope for the future, but we don't know for sure. We didn't have it secured. So we, we got a loan, but we didn't have the money yet to pay it back. But we hoped we'd get the money to pay it back. Just the timing seems weird to me, that's all.
It also seems like it's a nascent market.
Just seemed unnecessary at a time where we couldn't approve a budget that would keep schools open. And I'm really sorry, I'm very tired tonight, and I'm fairly really agitated because I would really love, I'd love to support schools. I am involved, I've been involved from day one. I would really love to be involved in a positive way that I enjoy. But this is what we need to do right now, and I have to tell you, we're very stressed. And we really, really need to change this. We need to go back to working together and doing things that are positive for our district. That is amazing. Our teachers are amazing. Our schools are scoring. Gangbusters, Navisink number 13, have to give a shout out to that. That is a testament to the community, and that is a testament to the parent volunteers like myself who go into the schools and pour ourselves into the schools. So I would love to echo what Katie said. Could we please make this positive? Because I don't know how much more of this that we are gonna be able to handle. Thank you.
Amy, I have a question. Because there seems to be some kind of miscommunication out there. The signage on the football field, that money goes to the booster club. They're soliciting that. That's not going to the, to the digital scoreboards.
If the, if they put up the signage, it's going to them.
Right.
If, if it's signage that we have brought in with our sponsorship activities, then the money goes to us.
How do you tell, how do we tell the difference?
Well, because we, we get the deals with these sponsors that are dealing directly with us, and so the money related to those deals comes to us.
So would we.
Through the shore advertising group.
Yeah.
The things that come through the shore advertising group go to the scoreboard.
But the booster clubs go out and they, they sell banners. Right. So are we saying that we also sell banners to hang on those fences?
There's.
The signage we are hanging is on the backside of the scoreboard.
Yes. We're only doing, that's what I, that's what I said at the beginning. Only the electronic is what we're getting the money for.
We have one fixed advertisement that's going to the backside of the scoreboard.
So is there only, so the, so the $5,000 a year is the only one that's gonna go on the back of that scoreboard?
Yes, it'll be a large, it'll be a large banner on the back of the scoreboard. It's not digital.
Well, but it's $5,000 each school. It's not $10,000 each school, it's $5,000 each school.
Our hope is that, that the majority of the advertisement is going to be digital. Like, that was the intention of this. This company that, that offered this, this sponsorship with the signage for the back, you know, we know that's limited, that's, that's a, a one thing, a one-time thing because there's not gonna be any room left on that scoreboard.
Right, because somebody sent me something on Facebook that said that all the money was going to the booster clubs. And I said, no, that's not true. We have to pay off that $1.5 million loan with the money we get for advertising. That's what I wanted to make.
This, Menewies, it's not, it's not 1.5 million. The scoreboards, and I don't have the exact number in front of me, but they were about 725,000 for both boards.
So the bottom was only 700. Okay. That, and that's another misinformation that's dropped there. Yeah, they were saying that was for one board.
Jelena Rashi, it's getting too late for you, you guys can leave, it's up to you. But you're welcome to stay. I know you have school tomorrow.
Ashley Stud, Middletown. At the next meeting, could you just give us an update where we are financially with advertisers so that we know if we're close to paying back? I think that would help with all of this discussion. Because we're, it's a very large expense for the district, so we just wanna know, are we getting the advertisements we were hoping for? Are we looking good? What's our true investment?
I can, I can answer right now that we haven't met, you know, we haven't met the level of the lease payment for this year. You know, we've just, we just approved the sponsorship firm a couple of months ago. They're starting to bring deals in, but no, we're not, we're not at the level yet.
Football season's almost over.
I'm sorry?
That football season's almost over, so we're not gonna get a whole lot.
Right, but there's some spring, you know, there's events in the spring too.
There are spring sports.
And if we get multiple, multiple years.
Again, again, this is, this is another. I'm glad that you said that we didn't need it, but I think we'd like to know how far away we were. Just some financial matters, just like a treasure. Uh, sorry, not gonna say it wrong. Board administrators report.
Thank you.
How did we come up with the $5,000 for the back of the sold advertisers?
That we have the shore advertising group, that broker's that deal, and, you know, they work with the industry standard on what that would be.
So the district has no say?
We, we have, I mean, obviously in the approval process, yes. But we don't, we don't borrow or hardly have.
We have multiple back there, but it's only one, $1,000.
Because again, the intention of the scoreboards was not to advertise fixed, advertise, you know, signs and posters and things like that. It was, it was a digital advertising platform that we were really, really, that was the, the bigger ticket, we felt. Because there is the opportunity for, for a larger amount of advertising to go onto that because you can scroll through them routinely. So really, it is unlimited.
Okay. Just curious, because we never really had that discussion.
I'll be quick, I promise. Emily Donahue, Middletown resident. How did we lease the scoreboards? Who, who did we get the financing from?
Amy, do you know the answer? The scoreboard leasing?
I don't remember off the top of my head what the name of the bank is, but the financing went out to bid. So we, we issued a bid for the financing and then took in the interest rate proposals and selected the lowest interest rate.
Awesome. I'll just, I'll, I'll email you. Thank you so much, Amy.
Since this is such a, uh, Rebecca Lara, Middletown. Since this is such a heavily debated topic of conversation, do you think we could get a printout of, you know, packages? What would a digital ad package look like? How many times would it run? Then it can be public. I know that, you know, when I came home last month, I asked, I told my husband about it, and he's like, I wish I knew that, I would have put my company up there. There are companies in our, in our communities that would love to participate. And instead of relying on a third party, we could also just advertise within our own community. I think you would get a surprising amount of support.
Good idea.
Do we have that stuff from the agency?
Do we have that information from the agency of what the prices are? We could get it from them.
Yeah, we can.
Yeah, we can get it from them.
Motion to adjourn?
Someone. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Approve? Stand. Have a great night, everyone.